So you know, we're getting going here now. So, and we will start with our EDA meeting. So the first thing on the agenda for the EDA meeting is to approve the minutes from the August 24th, 2022 meeting. All right, good. Do you have a motion?
Yeah, so move it.
And a second? Okay. All in favor? Aye. Next thing is Caitlin Richards.
Hello, good evening.
Martha Seda.
Yes, so we have a couple of updates tonight. A lot of them are surrounding the facade improvement program in town. So the first note is that on October 27th in 2021, facade improvement grant was approved for the corner bar and grill. And they have completed those updates. It was for new windows on the first floor. So they have submitted their payment request form as well as a copy of the invoice for the work done just to prove it was completed. So we are just asking that you approve the payment in the amount of $2,500 to go to corner bar and grill.
Do we need a motion?
I believe so.
We have a second?
Sir?
We have any, yeah. Motion to approve the corner bar and grill facade improvement application. All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes.
Incredible. So then the corner bar and grill also did submit a new application to replace the windows on the second floor. When I talked to Brenda, she said the lead time was about a year, so she would like to put the order in now. The cost for that is $5,000, and so she's asking once again for $2,500, which aligns with our maximum requested $2,500 for at least 50, or for max 50% of the project cost. Upon reviewing the application, it does fall into the eligibility of the program. And I know we also discussed at the last meeting how frequently an applicant can apply. And we decided once every year with at least six months in between. So this also falls into that timeline requirement. So staff is recommending approval for another $2,500 project for facade improvements to corner bar and grill.
My question would be, if it hasn't happened, that if somebody maybe just keep doing this, and would that be right, or maybe if they just did this every year, let's say? And is, I don't know, is that right, or do we need to maybe get the word out more so that people? And I think you guys are probably going to talk to everybody.
Yeah.
Any people who want to do it, any of that kind?
Yeah, absolutely. So I actually think after the last meeting, and I talked to Jill today, we've gotten quite a bit of interest in the program. I think it was publicized more so even just with the newspaper being here. And so I think we've gotten a lot more interest in the program, which is very exciting to see maybe more than just one business utilize the program. However, I think as long as there's work, there is work that needs to be done by a business. I would encourage them to continue to apply, you know, if they weren't able to fund those updates by themselves. However, it's also the council's discretion whether or not to fund a project. So if you feel like maybe one business is taking advantage of it year after year, you know, maybe down the line you could decline the application. But also I'm open if you are looking to maybe, you know, edit the guidelines further and say, you know, max, maximize projects per business or something to again kind of restrain and make sure people are taking advantage. Yeah, put a cap on total applications or saying, you know, x amount of applications in a certain time period. Just again to make sure, you know, one business isn't utilizing all the funds that's kind of spread out. So I'm open to a suggestion like that as well.
I think as long as they're up here, where the three years from now, something crazy, you know, replacements in the 30th.
So Acting Mayor, if I may, I see from the, I think it's from the minutes, there was a revision to the policy to allow only one application per year. I guess I'm not sure if that's being implemented next on the EDA agenda. I'm not sure where we are in the processing of that, but that might impact the question that's being asked by the EDA members. Is that, am I right about that?
Yes, so that was a request from the last meeting to revise the guidelines. And this applicant still falls under that timeline. They applied last year, but it's been more than six months since their last application. But I agree, yeah, I think that addresses part of the concern. And if we wanted to further, you know, institute more, more guidelines around it, we absolutely can.
Got it, okay.
Yeah, or more restrictions.
So this is just a predated application. It's the old rules. And I think going forward, you've got some new rules that would address sort of repeated applications, so.
Are we talking about the revisions yet, or?
That's next on the agenda. Yes, so first will be the application, then we'll talk about the revision.
Okay. Do we need a motion for the next application?
I'm motion to approve the new year regulations, I thought I was.
I'll second. I guess I get to do that as Acting Mayor. You do? Yeah, okay. All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes.
Awesome. So then the next item on the agenda is to look at that revision to the guidelines. And you'll see there was nothing actually in the guidelines in the first place that addresses the timeline. So I just added a note to the, to the application process section. And the addition reads applicant may only submit one application per year. Applications must be submitted at least six months apart. If applicant is applying in consecutive years, they may, they may reach out to the economic development coordinator for earliest eligibility date. And again, if we wanted to maybe put a further restriction on that, or if we wanted to, we could potentially try, you know, a new tracking process and something that makes it more clear. So that way we make sure they're not applying for the same project, you know, every year. Maybe we say, if you apply for new windows, you have to wait x amount of years for a window, or something along those lines. So we can try maybe tracking whatever would make you most comfortable.
Do we all get to read these revisions of these guidelines?
What's in here? I went through them, yeah.
Yeah, and the only change was the one highlighted and read at the very end. Everything else was standard from before.
So one thing I thought I was here maybe, and I don't know how we would put this in here, that this shouldn't be used in lieu of insurance work? Or maybe in conjunction with insurance work? So they can get, yeah, I don't know.
Absolutely.
Well, I don't think we should be a subsidy for the insurance, you know. I don't know how we would write that, I guess. I don't know what you, just maybe what I said, but.
Yeah, I can honestly, I can work on some language, add something. Or even, you know, in the application, I know there are no restrictions or notes. Like if there's not a restrictions or notes section already in the guidelines. So maybe just adding something like that that says, you know, here's your timeline restrictions, you know, addresses insurance concerns. And then Mitch actually sent me the guidelines also for Pine Island. So seeing if we have any language missing from our guidelines, that other things we'd like to add in that are standard for other communities. I can reach out to my CETA colleagues as well and kind of make sure what we're doing is in line with what other communities do as well.
Yeah, the EDA president, if I could. So for Caitlin's benefit, it looks like the policy as it's written now has a Section B eligibility. And then if you look at F, under eligibility, there is a list of ineligible projects. And I think what's suggested there is that projects that are paid for by insurance that are in damage correction, you can just add that to the list. Because I think that makes a little sense, so.
Just add that, okay.
Perfect.
So we're not going to work on or approve these, approve these right now or anything? We'll get another?
Yeah, I can present a new draft at the next meeting.
And you said you were going to look at some other cities too and see if there's anything else?
Yes, I can reach out to all my CETA colleagues and just see if they would be open to sending me their guidelines. And then again, I can kind of compare and then make any additional, you know, additions necessary or revisions and bring that back to the board.
That sounds good to me.
Perfect.
You're all ready. You all think that?
Yep.
Awesome. Alrighty. Well, then next on the agenda regarding the facade improvement program is that we are working now with the city attorney in Kennedy and Graven, just to make sure also what we have makes sense and is in line, you know, legally. I also will say that I talked to Jill this morning and talked to her about where the funds were coming from. Because I know we addressed that at the last meeting I was at as well. And she let me know that they were just coming from the general fund.
And actually, let me change that.
Yes, absolutely.
Because we were talking about the general fund with the budget, there's actually an EDA line.
Perfect. Awesome. Great. And I just want to make sure that I'm also, I'm going to look into see how we are funding that and how we're planning to fund it go forward. I know the state also implements, like revolving loan funds to communities. So maybe if this group's interested in me looking at starting some type of revolving loan funds that could help fund some of these projects as well. That would not be grant based like this program is now. But typically it's a good program for people who, you know, need gap financing to complete projects. Like we can administer to, you know, businesses in the community at a lower interest rate than what they may traditionally receive from a bank. So I can look and see what the application process looks like to apply for a revolving loan fund from the state. And then potentially we could have that as another option for businesses looking for improvements or to buy equipment or things like that that actually aren't funded by our facade program.
And EDA president, if I can just say, so Caitlin has already acknowledged this in an email that I've seen. But so I don't know everything, or maybe I don't know lots of things. But one of the things I don't know about is the stuff that George is here tonight to talk about. I don't know that much about the financing stuff that he's going to talk about. And I think my partner who is helping George, Julie Eddington, is probably also the person who's going to look at the EDA guidelines to make sure they're copacetic state law. So just to acknowledge that, that there are other people in my office that know more about things than I do, and they're going to help with some of those things, so.
And council, if you were to take a look, it's further in your packet, but where the balancing statements are. It's the second line is where EDA is. You'll see your total funds. If you would like me to read that number right now, it's at a negative $37,000 in EDA.
It is $37,000.
But you're at a negative $24,000 to begin with at the beginning of the year, so. Got to remember, the checkbook is one checkbook, but there's all these funds. So yes, the checkbook has a lot of money, but once, once you start looking at the funds, that's why we have to study the fund balances every, every conference meeting itself when we make these decisions.
Thanks for the context, Joe. Alrighty, so then next on the agenda is the park grants. I know we've been discussing different options for Cranston Heights Park. There is an organization called Game Time that has, or they are currently accepting applications for park equipment or fitness equipment or playground equipment, however you kind of want to say it. The grants will provide 100% matching funds for play systems. And I think they will do up to $25,000 in matching funds for playground equipment. The only thing is for something like this, we'd obviously need to match the funds. So I'm going to be looking at different funding options for us to see if this is something we could maybe apply for, you know, a grant to get 100% matching funds and potentially maybe have another grant provide our matching funds for us to get some playground equipment in Cranston Heights Park. The other thing, as I know Mitch had mentioned, that in Pine Island, they did that tire park. So I did reach out to him, and he's finding some more information out for me on how they went about tire collection, what the installation process was like, as well as any associated costs. So if that's like a low cost option, or we're not able to find a matching source for this grant, then maybe you can pursue the tire park instead. So just gathering some more information on that to see what the best option for Cranston Heights is. And we're also looking at potentially updating the shelter and trying to see what costs that would be. Since I know people had given us feedback that the shelter was not as nice as they would like to see it.
So do we want to pursue this playground equipment grant maybe or not? Does it face half of it? I mean, I think we've talked about it and seen before that it's a pretty expensive option to get a playground equipment. And even, even if we got a grant for half right now at our current budget, is that something we want to pursue?
So, so let me, let me take it back a little bit. So EDA is something that you guys elected to have as, as part of your city. So you, you need her company to be able to continue to help beautify your city. So it's just like having a swimming pool. It's going to be one of those funds that is always riding on the red or in the red. So that wasn't to deter you from that. It, that was impartial. How many facade loans do you want to be able to get? So if the corner bar comes back four more times for it, that's one business that's doing it. Whereas Jason has talked about doing something with his business, there's going to be others. So if we go and do five for the 30 businesses, well, you're going to start pulling some funds when and already, as we'll get to it tonight, as our budget is getting higher and higher. So just, so the EDA is there. It's, you're not going to get rid of it. So, and it was in the red at the beginning of the year anyways. But it's just that if you're going to start doing, if you put a cap on five, I mean, that's your decision. But if we're going to go and give Jason five of them in, in each place, five of them, well, five at $2,500, it's going to be a lot of money. But that's your decision again, so. It didn't mean to totally scare you by saying negative 35, but you're at negative 24 at the beginning of the year. However, you got to be aware of how much money you're giving out.
And, you know, my thoughts weren't in reference to that at all. I guess I was just thinking, do we, you know, at current budget conditions, do we want to continue to pursue looking at playground equipment?
And I will say for this grant specifically, so let's say, you know, the city hasn't already budgeted $25,000 for it. Then I can maybe reach out to, you know, the Lions or local organizations to see if they'd be interested in providing the matching funds as opposed to the city. That's kind of what I was thinking. I don't necessarily think, you know, if it's already not budgeted for the city, I don't think we should ask. But instead, maybe ask, you know, local organizations or see if there's another grant we could apply for that would then give us the matching funds. So that's what I was thinking. Yeah, not coming out of the city's budget.
That's not a good idea.
And I know going off of that topic, I did talk to some people with the JCs, and they, they would be willing to help.
Awesome.
They did say, so the JCs have already expressed an interest in assisting Maritza and the lives to the park. So I think we could, if we don't have them.
Probably should keep moving forward, then hopefully people will help with the matching fund. Absolutely.
Yeah, great. Then I will reach out to JCs and Lions.
I, I think looking into the tires thing.
Yeah.
You know, and is it being used by, I don't know.
Yeah, absolutely. And then also, you know, if we decide not to pursue this grant, or, you know, we can't find matching funds, instead we do the tire park and then maybe also ask JCs to help us update the shelter. I think we need to sandblast it and then paint from what I was talking to Public Works today. So, you know, maybe JCs would fund that, you know, the tire could be low cost. That's an alternative for the park. Absolutely. Great. Awesome. Then the last thing I have on the agenda would be the CETA contract. So when I looked back at the old meeting minutes, I realized that the CETA contract was presented to the board for approval last October. So I was planning on following the same cadence to present the CETA contract for renewal for 2023 at the October meeting. I believe that's October 26th. So I just wanted to get that on everybody's radar. I've reached out to Ron, who is the president of CETA, to get, you know, the contract and get the rates for 2023 so I can bring that to you all now that it's budget time, so we can take a look at that. So that'll be the second meeting in October where I will present that to the board. And then the only other thing on there are the October days. I will be in Goodhue. I'm planning on just working on Wednesdays on the council meeting days. I'll be in Goodhue. Those two Wednesdays in October, if you need anything, feel free to stop by. I've been working in the conference room, so. Yeah? Any other questions? Awesome. Great. Thank you all.
Do we, um, this might be the place, I guess, to bring this up. Apparently we are looking at a couple more sales on a couple of lots, maybe?
Yeah, so we had one lot that Wayne Gideon is working on the closing process now. They have fixed it out there. He's working on that work that happened yesterday. And then today I was notified that there's another one that's, that's being sold. And that is due to close with the paperwork in December with the start date of April. So that is actually excellent news, coming in at the timing of our budget. That was brand new, like two of them.
Yes, we have a motion to adjourn, EDA.
So, second?
Motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? EDA is adjourned. And we'll move into the City of Goodview meeting and start with a Pledge of Allegiance. We can all stand.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. On the agenda, we have an amendment. So that, so that Mr. Ilkerson, did I say that right? Doesn't have to stay all night. We're going to maybe try to move a couple of things here. We're going to try and move seven and eight up to four and five, and then four and five down to seven and eight.
I'm always happy to stay.
Well, we don't want to make you have to, you know. We all have life outside this, right?
So do we have a motion to, for the, motion?
A second? Okay, so all those in favor of the amended agenda? Aye. Opposed? All right, that passes. Approved meeting minutes from August 24th. I did read them.
I just wondered about that.
Okay.
Oh, adjourn the meeting. See, I read it wrong. Sorry, forget it.
Aye.
Wait a minute. There's two here, two adjourn the meeting. The last two.
Yeah, did we have a closed meeting too, or is no?
No.
So I'm going to take out the, the motion from Han, seconded by Tuman, that one, because that would have been attached to my signature one.
And this is almost unbelievable, but I found a spelling mistake because I am a horrible speller. Motion carried. Jake breaking sign. We misspelled Jake. Should be J-A-K-E. You can all come up later and tell me how to break that. I never catch that stuff. So do we have a motion to approve? Meeting minutes has, has changed. Meeting minutes has changed.
I move it to the minutes is amended.
Amendment. Anybody need more time?
I'll start.
Okay. All those in favor? Aye, opposed? That passes. So now we're going to seven. George.
Good evening, Acting Mayor, members of the council. George Ilkerson, Northland Securities. And I've got three items for your agenda this evening. May not be listed specifically on the agenda, but three items to cover. One is, when I was with you at your last city council meeting, we talked about it's budget time. Jill is putting together the preliminary budget. And so you directed me to work with her on, you know, reviewing the debt, kind of assembling your existing debt so that there's a line item on your budget called the debt service levy that we could, you know, fine tune that number. And so Jill and I, and actually Lori Agri worked with us as well on this, put together an overview of your existing debt. Now, my apologies, this is a very small font, hard to read even for me here. But what this does, and I can go through it quickly and then answer any questions you might have, is it just kind of assembles all of your existing debt. And the page that's up on the screen there is the summary page. And so when Lori, I'm sorry, when Jill is putting together the preliminary budget, she's working off of these numbers here for the debt. Is there a way to make that bigger?
Supercharged here.
That's perfect, thank you. So the key number in, where it says tax levy cycle, right where the cursor used to be, is that's what is the tax levy on your existing bond issues. So there's, that's certainly a key number that is making its way into your budget. But I'll go quickly here, bond by bond, if you wouldn't mind going to the next page. Jill, the first bond or the oldest bond that you have is the, and it's not very old at all, 2017, Swanson Heights bond issue. And so this one was originally issued for $900,000. And when I hear Jill and the EDA talking about, hey, good news, we sold some lots, that's this bond issue. So as you probably all recognize. So you've got, if there's not lot sale revenue, of course, what the city has done in the past is done a general fund transfer to make the debt service payment. But now with new lot sales coming in and new revenues, you know, that's certainly positive going into 2023 and hopefully and beyond. So that's really the revenue source here to pay these bonds is lot sales. And again, if there's a shortfall in that regard, we have to do a general fund transfer. So if there's ever a question, just.
I might just add a comment.
Sure.
From what I understand, in the past, when we would sell a lot, the monies from that sale would go into the general fund. That's what Lori used to do.
For these, but not the twin home one.
Okay.
Twin home, home one goes up, we take it right to the, and to pay it off.
So if we do need to take money from the general fund, a lot of time that money is there because, you know, that money from lot sales went into that.
Right.
Just so we kind of all understand, you know, that's not necessarily a bad thing to take it from the general fund. That's where those monies are going.
And I'd say that's the only, well, twin home one, I guess, is kind of a similar bond issue. And let's move one page ahead here. This was in 2020, $362,000 for the twin home project. Even though it's really small on the bottom, there's a note, and this is from Jill saying the city is anticipating there will be enough sale revenue in 2022 to pay these bonds off. So maybe you can add some color to that, Jill or Mayor. But I believe we're looking at paying these bonds off.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, because that's Bigalos.
Yep.
Yes.
Yeah, that's why we put them on the radio. Are you still on track with that correct?
We're getting back on track. So the August one had to be, it's, I overnighted the paperwork just because of the transfer of a city attorney, them having a death with Bigalos. And so we're off track just by a couple of weeks, but they're on track to their August payment. The paperwork is processed now.
Okay.
Next page, please, Jill. The next several pages all relate to, in 2021, so last year, we did a $1.97 million refunding bond, which refunded a couple of different bond issues together. And so this page represents the water tower portion of that. So this one's pretty straightforward. No levy dollars coming in. It's just the revenues of the water utility to pay the debt. It's your longest debt, goes out to 2040. But again, that's not unusual for major infrastructure items like a water tower to be financed over a longer term. Next page is.
Maybe a quick comment on the water tower?
Yes.
Just want to understand, the bond payments due on that are actually coming from the funds we received for the Verizon tower on our tower?
Yeah, and the water, water revenue that's coming in.
Okay. So, you know, that one's pretty well covered for us, is what I'm, you know, going to say.
Yeah, the Verizon one just came out, right? We just got a payment from them, I saw that.
Yeah, 23.
That helps.
Yes, definitely. So the next, and thank you for your questions. The next one is, this actually goes back to 2010. And maybe it's one page further. It says $300,000. So this was your 2010 street project. This is, I believe, the fifth page, Jill. Looks like you've got it there. And so this one goes out to 2026. We've got your tax levy plugged in there as well as your remaining special assessments. So this one is flowing good. You've got good anticipated revenues here to make the bond payments. That's your 2010 street project. The next page, again, part of that bigger bond issue or the refunding bond. This was your 2014 street project, was also refunded with those bonds. And this one, as noted, has, just like the 2010 project, assessments as well as tax levy as the revenue sources to make the bond payments. The next page is also part of that refunding. This one was for the pool. So this one is what was called an abatement bond. So this one, again, helped to make improvements out of the swimming pool. We're showing this as a general fund transfer to make the bond payments on this project. And actually, the next page is the upcoming bond issue. So that's the end of your existing debt, council. Any questions on that existing debt? So the nice thing is, when we get the twin homes project paid off, get those bonds paid off, get Swanson Heights, get these lot sales coming in, and then that project is, you know, got a nice fund balance, if you will, to pay down some debt. Things are looking really good in terms of your existing street projects are looking quite well. And then this addition of new bonds, which is here for 2022 street project, certainly is the new addition. We've worked in, and this page is, what I've got here is actually an 11-year financing term. Last time I talked about 10 years and 15 years. So you might say, George, why are you talking about 11? But your assessments are not being certified until the project's done. So they'll be 2023. The assessments will be certified for 10 years, is my understanding. Well, depending upon what term you select. And then, but that's starting a levy this fall for first budget. Next year, the 11 collections of taxes. So that's why I say 11-year bond. So that's what I'm showing here, council. It's the approximate special assessments plus the levy of about $77,000 per year. Now, I know you haven't decided officially, council, on 11-year, like you see here versus 15-year, but I think that's one of the items for you to discuss tonight. I should note that we are communicating with the bank already on this one. They're interested, they just have to take it through their loan committee to get it approved. We anticipate at your next city council meeting, I believe it's the 28th of this month, that you would have a bond resolution. Approval of that would lock in the rates and terms on this financing. So Mayor and council, did you have an opportunity to review the shorter term versus the 15-year term?
Yeah, I mean, to me, it seems like the shorter term is your better bet by far, but.
Save those money for the shorter term.
By far, save the money. And if the funds are available, it's possible, I would think that's a way better option, so.
But I, and I'm actually glad to hear that. The, I think for this financing, the shorter term or 11-year financing term works good. For one, the interest rate will be better, you know, of course, less interest cost over time. And then as you retire one existing bond issue and then Swanson Heights looking better, I think the shorter term matches up pretty well with your whole review of that.
Can I say the same thing?
I know Carrie wants, girl was thinking that too, so.
The shorter, okay.
The shorter.
Oh, Mayor, I'll defer to you on this. If you want to have a motion and vote which term, financing term you prefer.
Do I do that now, council?
Patrice, are you okay with that or?
Yes.
So we have a motion to go with the shorter term financing for our.
Oh, sure.
Second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to use the shorter term bond issue for the 2022 street project. All those in favor? Aye, opposed? Motion passed.
Thank you for your, for your time to review that. And finally, and I don't have this listed as an agenda item for you tonight, but we're working in that capacity of what's called municipal advisor to the city, helping to line up this financing. I should have on your agenda a agreement that references that and our role or responsibility. You can kind of see what it is. It's putting the financing together, working with bond council to get a legal opinion in place, and then ultimately close the bonds. I apologize, that's not in front of you. I spoke with your city attorney about this before the meeting and think that if you're comfortable just kind of on a motion approving Northland to work as your municipal advisor on this financing, I'll get an agreement to Jill to sign.
Sure. Do you agree with that?
I'll motion for that.
I'll second.
Yeah, Acting Mayor, if I can just say before you vote, I totally agree with George, your advisor on that. You know, the firm, Northland, that's in front of you is very, very good. We work with them all the time. You need somebody to do this kind of work. I understand your city attorney previously was doing a fair amount of finance-related things. We're not really, lawyers aren't really very smart about numbers, let's be honest. Maybe prior to the attorney was, but most lawyers aren't. And so you need that service. I guess I would just say, I think I'll understand the motion to be to proceed with Northland, subject to working out the final words that are on the piece of paper. I assume that George, you'll send a page or two or five contract that would be in writing and we'll approve that at the next meeting. So with that, though, I just want to make that point on the record, so.
And I would just add, we have worked with you folks for quite a while, long as I can remember, I guess, so, yeah.
Just wanted to kind of formalize the arrangement kind of on the project.
Good idea. Good idea. Do we have a motion and a second?
Yep.
All right, all those in favor? Aye, opposed? Motion passes.
Sounds great. Thank you for your time.
I have a question.
Yes.
So our sewer plant is really at the end of life. It is, you know, at one point, at one place, we have plants growing out of the side of the building, you know, the concrete. I mean, that's, it's pretty sad, wouldn't you say, Michael?
It's in disrepair. That's an easy way to put it. It's the worst I've seen, probably, but it does a really good job of what it's doing. So we are, we're lucky about that. And we certainly, I see a 10-year lifespan of that point left.
Yeah, well, you look at it, it's 65-year-old concrete, you know, that sewage is running through, or more, 65, 67 years old, the valves, the piping, a lot of the electrical.
I heard we just replaced some stuff, dude.
We have.
We'll just reset things.
But yeah, but I don't know if we wanted to get a bond for that. Could we get some numbers put together on what that could look like, the amount? And then also some input from everybody? Jason, you would like to maybe just pump it now or do something pumping it to Zembroda rather than a new plant? Do we want to do some engineering as far as the difference in price, as far as maybe a new plant pumping it to Zembroda? I think we're all wrapped up in that, so that's why I'm bringing it up and what a bond. Reese, you have some opinions there?
We actually ran some numbers. I think it was last year, so we have some decent information for you on what those costs would be. But if you are, you know, building a new plant, just understand if you're trying to treat it here, the PCA is requiring chloride. And so you're either building a water treatment plant with that or you'll be removing stoppers.
From the city. What if we pump it to Zembroda?
If we pump it to Zembroda, then that would be part of Zembroda's treatment system.
Okay.
Then you would just be worried about the cost and the force needed to get to Zembroda and whatever connection fee or terms that they would look at, because they would typically put additional fee onto that.
If we pump it to Zembroda, can we also have plants move into the other manufacturing plants or processing plants and would that handle that?
Yes, so typically you'll put together like a pre-treatment agreement or some sort of agreement. Typically, you would build in some excess capacity to let a pumping system that you build. And then you would plan that out for X and Y years. And then say you get a heavy industrial user that's going to generate some heavy loadings onto that. Then they would typically be required to pre-treat that to a certain level before that building the city's pumping system. They don't have to do that on the site.
Acting Mayor, can I just follow up on, it's Reese, right? Sorry, yeah. So agree with everything you just said. Just to put, the lawyers always get to be the heavy, right, the bad guys in the room. To put another spin on that, that means that growth here, industrial growth in particular here, would be subject to agreement with another community, right? The amount of growth you could have here would be subject to an agreement with, in this case, Zembroda. And there would be some limits presumably on how much you could accommodate. So that's, you know, for better or worse, that's what is being contemplated by that, so.
Well, so my thought was, do we want to put some numbers together to see what the cost would be and what we might have to do to raise fees to pay for that? I don't want to put a bond on our budget without a way to paying for it. So I don't know if we want to look at that and ask, you know, if we couldn't get those numbers put together? We do?
I think so.
Well, it's a loss.
Well, I think we're on, you know, running on borrowed time on that plan now. So I think we need to start a process. And maybe the process is pumping it to Zembroda then. And even if there's some limitations, it might be there. I think from what I've heard in the past, we could, we could do quite a bit yet, you know, as far as pumping it to Zembroda to above what we have. So how do we do that? How do we get, run some numbers and put that together or that?
Sure, well, looking at a, for example, you saw in your existing debt, the general obligation water bonds for your water tower, you would do general obligation sewer back to new bonds for this type of improvement. It's pretty straightforward financing. I mean, we would size the financing around, if it's, it might just be engineering initially, a shorter term bond that's taken out by a state loan. Oftentimes, there's the state of Minnesota has a loan program that finances at a low, historically low interest rates on a 20 to 30-year term. So when the time is right, if we can certainly in short order get a financing put together for you. Whether it be short term initially, just to kind of have money for the engineering review, you know, analyze the alternatives, you know, ISG, of course, will be looking, I'm going to put you on the spot here, Reese. but, uh, they'll be looking to get paid for that time. So, uh, sometimes you do a short term, say after three years, uh, bond issue for that. And then that gets rolled into, say, the longer term financing when you are, you've been out to bid on the project. Or it gets rolled into a state loan.
Though we do have some money in a sewer fund to, uh, maybe help pay for the engineering costs. I, I, I don't know how, how much Reese is going to, you know, college, I mean. Just kidding.
So, so if you're talking about the current sewer fund?
Yeah.
No, you're two hundred and fourteen thousand dollars for sure. Um.
But we have a separate fund.
But, and we have a hundred and twenty-five in that facility.
Yeah, yeah.
So it depends on which one you're talking about.
Yeah.
And we actually live at a very high level, I mean, we've already done a lot of work with previously, so.
Okay.
We have some rough numbers, just sort of made to, it's not going to be done, and you're fully designed, have any means, but just figure it out. It's usually what it's going to be.
So I guess I'd like the council's thoughts on if we should proceed with giving some numbers and, and figuring out what we, you know, an option, may, maybe this is just an option, but, uh, man, I just hate to let this go much longer.
Yeah, the legislature didn't come through for us, so we can't depend on them. And if we did, we start doing something ourselves, start looking for it.
Yeah.
If we did decide to pump to Zembroda, it's, it's quite a timeframe to deal with state of Minnesota and get all the permits and get everything. What do you look at, a year and a half, two years, just for that?
I mean, by the time you get all your entitlements, you know, water, probably at least two years.
Wow.
And by the time.
You know, and that's why, yeah, like you said, we got it.
Yeah.
Acting mayor.
Yeah.
Just, just only because I heard this kind of conversation, and maybe this exact conversation in another community. Um, I mean, I think maybe the, the, cause I agree now with two people in the room, George and Reese, what they've said. Um, I think maybe one way to start would just be to ask Reese to provide a quote on providing a report, which would analyze what, or it sounds like at least two options, maybe more than two, but one, Zembroda, and another would be working on your own plant. And let him give you a quote on sort of a high level overview of that. Sounds like you've done some work already on that, but give him, let him have an opportunity for a month to give you a quote on that. And then it sounds like you'd want to proceed with that, but then you'd at least know what you're looking at from Reese's firm to, to give you a comparison of how you might get this solved, um, if you have to get it solved yourselves.
I'm good with it?
I agree with it. Yeah, I, I agree.
Okay. Okay, let's, let's start there.
Well.
Um, and, and maybe, uh, maybe there's a CETA coordinator who could look into grants for, for these things too. Okay, so, good. I don't know if we needed, we don't need a motion, just asking to do that, so, that's a great idea, thank you.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, that's what, I was looking at that last night, a phone meter, that's what we have had to replace, right? It's not, yeah, oh, it hasn't replaced yet. It's not replaced, no, and I've seen some numbers on it and stuff here, so.
Are we waiting for that?
Well, I'm hoping for another quote to come back.
Oh.
So. We tried to get ours and they don't have it. Well, yeah, it's another plan, so, well.
Well, I think we're ready to move past. Number seven. Yeah, thank you, we appreciate all the work and all the help.
Um, so if we can amend the agenda again, um, and go back, skipping, um, number eight since George left me, I'll take on the budget levy all on my own, so if you want to move back to number four.
All right, is that okay with everyone? Move back to number four? All right. I'm lost with that. Jill's got a solid under orders.
You're on old business.
So old business, security system, who do we have? Do we have someone here helping with that, or talking about that?
Nobody's here, but that was on your, presented in your packet last, uh, council meeting.
What, what, do we have any, um, Jason, do you know, is there any most, any, uh, movement on the security system? Or what we're doing with all that?
So that won't be anything for Jason, that would be your city clerk who's brought that up.
Okay.
We were deciding which ones we wanted to go with.
That was correct.
I guess after I looked at it, um, talking with employees who use the security system, to view it, um, to make sure basically visually they can see what we need to see if there are anything. You know, I think it's a, I think it's a good idea, it protects us, um, it protects our building here and more of our equipment, which ultimately is, is, uh, unfortunately not a thing we can have a look past in New York.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
Now, you have the well station, it needs some kind of monitoring so we can. If you're going to do it, you might as well do it so you can actually, like, so you can see what's going on.
Yeah, and that would be, that would be another person I think, okay, I know you're secure, I mean, some security.
We had two options, um. More of the, the, the high bid one was a little, quite a little bit more money, but.
But that's the one that goes.
It's the better one.
It's what goes with the computer system.
With the camera, exactly.
If you're recording, you might as well do it right.
Or if you want up sixty-nine dollar or a hundred and eighty-nine dollar, ring one.
I think, I, I just kind of went past.
No. Might work for someone.
Right.
Yeah.
Uh, RWC Tech Solutions comes up with forty-three thousand, seven hundred and seventy-seven dollars.
Forty-three hundred, yeah.
Yeah, ninety-one cents. That is the one that was requested for me to pull, um, by the mayor, um, a quote for them. And there was no other suggestion on what else to do, so I went with Ring. That's all the further assistance I got on that, so I think the two ring options. So, and the conversation that you guys had from last, um, meeting and this meeting, um, if Ring is not obviously going to work for you, and this is the basic package for, um, RWC Tech Solutions, is the forty-three seventy-seven.
We do, we do a lot of different things with them too, correct?
Uh, yeah, they run our whole computer systems.
They looked up our cameras that we had access to as well. So I already have cameras inside of the cabinet, we had access to those, they installed those as well. And then the maintenance was, was all together with all this, right?
Yeah, mediums is included, and then we are paying.
That's what I thought, yeah, so I mean, if, I mean, if they're going to work on it, they're going to work on all of it.
Yeah. For, um, I, I'll make a motion to, uh, approve the, uh, security system by Red Wing, uh, Computers and Tech Solutions.
Your motion and a second to approve the Red Wing, uh, bid? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes. And I guess what I was bringing up with Jason too, is the idea, were we gonna, were we still thinking about, uh, a window or something for, for your area, uh, some kind of enclosure? We had talked about that.
Will be office.
Yeah.
I guess that would be under construction, and if you want to talk about that, you can add that to the agenda.
I don't know if we want to or need to at this time.
Well, no, we are knocking this wall, that was an option a while back, like a year ago, and that's, that's, yeah.
Um.
Just to keep this as an office.
So it, it changed, I will, I'll be honest with you, okay? It changes every single council meeting, then it gets tabled, and then there's another idea, and then it's skipped for a month. So, um, I, I'm going to suggest to the council that they make some decisions, um, relatively soon, either you're going to do it or you're not going to do it, so that there's not the, um, conversation within city hall with your full-time employees.
Right, well, I, I know we are going to move forward, but is Kyle Dunn with this office yet? Is he out here yet or not, or what was, how, how are we going about that?
The council makes, needs to make a decision on how fast that we're going to get some workers that go out there for public works, get public works to move. Public, uh, council needs to make the decision who's going to move where or what, and what structure that you would like to see at city hall. But it has been more than a year of discussion. So I can add that to the next agenda, what's your thoughts?
Yes.
Do sell us on a meet ahead of time for that, talk about it.
Sure, absolutely, you know.
Have a special meeting of some kind?
Yeah, I think so, you know, we can kind of go through it, decide who wants to go where and.
When do we want to put together a special meeting?
Um, that, that, that all depends on your guys' schedule, if you want to have a special meeting for that, or if you want, I mean, you don't, I guess, you wouldn't necessarily have to decide tonight, but we would have, just have to publish it at some point.
Well, I'll put up a meeting, I don't know, I've been running now, one of our guys died, so I've been home and stuff for all the going on with this, so. They, I know I have one next week, I don't know what day yet.
So if you individually want to tell me on an email what day will not work for you sometime next week, and then I'll, um.
Okay, sometime next week.
But it has to be individually emailing, please?
Sure, absolutely.
All right.
All right.
So we're good with four? And we're going to move to five?
Um, back before though, we did miss one session, the water tower with Chris Heath, is there?
Sorry, that was supposed to be cross off, did it not get crossed off? Um, so he isn't, he is talking to them, he, he.
So still in the development between him talking to Red Wing.
He has official conversation with him, with some documents going back and forth for that rental of the water tower. Um, and he, um, was not going to be able to be here and, um, or was not going to be ready for this meeting.
Okay.
He's going to, um, tend to just have at least set for the twenty ninth.
Okay, sounds good, thank you.
And, and acting mayor and council, that's just, uh, making sure that his company or his facilities would play nice with the rising stuff that's already out there as a.
Correct, yeah, just to make sure there's no interference or anything like that.
That makes sense, good, very good.
New business? And first thing, oh, Reese.
Good evening, um, just quickly going through the memo here, so water main loop, I am still waiting on that one empty bond, so just as soon as you can give me that paperwork, we can close that one out. Um, sanitary district, kind of like I mentioned the last meeting, we're not going to hear much for quite some time, so I've just left it on there, but, um, you know, if we are going to start taking a look at other options, then, then I can certainly.
Acting mayor, sorry, Reese, that's the failure of the legislature to move forward with.
A bonding, yeah, correct.
Just plain catch up on that.
Yep, no problem. Um, so then moving into Forest Street and Broadway, so, um, obviously quite a bit of work going on over the last few weeks. Um, so over on Forest Street, they do have some sand base and the aggregate base placed on a bulk of the roadway. Um, so they've got the utilities in, um, over on Forest Street, we did have a little bit of a change in the storm sewer alignment, but, um, I think we got that all squared away, so that, that shouldn't be too big of an issue there, yes.
Could you explain that, yeah, that extra structure?
Yep. Yep, so as part of the realignment of the storm sewer, um, we were trying to make the storm sewer go east and west and go through a catch basin. Um, it ended up being the outside edge, ended up being further than what we thought it was. And so we ended up realigning and kind of reworking some of the storm sewer system. Um, so as part of that, we didn't end up needing one structure, so there is an extra structure available. Um, so I don't know that they're going to be able to restock it, that's something I'm going to have to ask the contractor. Um, but since they didn't install it, it'll be a reduced price, but we will probably have one extra storm manhole, um, that we can reuse elsewhere when the time comes, so.
Yeah, and prices levels were in the brackets too, so.
Yep, yep.
Like what, close down or how bad was it?
Um, honestly, I don't think on the overall project, it'll really impact it that much. I mean, we'll have a little bit of rework, but I think it'll all end up fairly close, I don't have a great exact number for you.
Were you supervised?
Yeah.
A what? A quote? Contractor's application for payment, you mean?
Yep.
I do have one.
The first one should look like this. And then one was.
There you go. On the back of that is some more bond stuff, so maybe you put it with the bond thing.
Set her down.
Well, there you go.
Yeah, thank you.
I've memorized it.
Yeah, like I mentioned, Forest Street, that is coming right along, well, you'll, you probably won't see a ton of extra work going on there for the next few weeks. Um, you know, they may be putting some sand base and some of the aggregate base down, but, um, I would imagine that they're going to wait until they have Broadway ready as well, because they're probably only going to mobilize their contract, uh, their concrete paver, the curb crew once, so then they would knock both streets out at once. Similar thing, once the, the curb is cured, then they would bring in their, um, bituminous paving contractor. And then again, we're just doing the first lift this year, so there will be one lift, so you'll see about a, a two inch lip on either side of the road. Um, but, you know, once we get through the spring and we see how the freeze thaw cycle acts up, then they can fix anything that pops up, and then we can do our final pavement, our, our final pavement lift and close out the project next year, so. Um, they're still on track for that. Um, over on Broadway, we are starting to, obviously, they've got it all removed, they're starting through some of the utility work. Um, one thing that we did touch on last council meeting was potentially extending the water main to serve that last northwest lot. So, um, we did just go talk with Fitzgerald on kind of what that cost might look like. And before we say yes, go ahead and do this, um, you're probably looking in the mid-upper twenty thousand dollars, um, in order to extend the water main further. So they are going to have a little bit of, there is a gas line and there's, um, a handful of fiber and just telecommunications lines that they will be working next to, so it will take them some additional time in order to do that work. So it would probably extend the project about a week, is what they were thinking. So they will still, I, unless we have some torrential rains for weeks on end, I would still anticipate they would be just fine completing it, obviously.
Maybe just some clarification on the water line, uh, I guess we didn't know for sure where it ended up, but as they were looking for it, they found it, uh, before the last, um, hydrant down here on the street. Uh, Kerry and I were both looking at it, and we went ahead and decided, extend the, go ahead and extend, extend the water main to the end of the street, not just for the last lot, but also.
For the one on the other side, so.
Well, and if we decide to expand the city that way at all, if we didn't do it now, when they do need it to have it done, that we would have to dig the street up again. So it just seemed like the right thing to do at this time to say, go ahead, extend it. Have, you know, have they got it extended, or are they still?
No, no, they, they still have it stubbed right now, it, it's a very strange setup that they ran the, the service lines for the, the two end streets, basically back south another, it's probably sixty, eighty feet.
Okay.
And tied kind of all in at one spot, the way I'm seeing it, but it's, it was a private development a long time ago, and they did not do it the way that we.
So they did move ahead, I gather that.
So, no, that has not been moved ahead yet, we wanted to get some, some pricing in.
Yeah.
So, acting, acting mayor, if I can just ask Reese, so, and I'm not sure if I understand what we're talking about, but maybe I do. Um, to the extent we change sort of the boundaries of the project or the scope of the project, does that change what, uh, the proposed assessed parties look like? Or does that not impact the benefit parties by project?
At the end of the project, it would likely, you know, impact a little bit of the assessment, so yes, there would be some cost associated with that. Okay.
And then there's a little bit of information once I get to the budget levy, to be able to bring some of that into light. And then I partner a lot, so I hope I get to share the correct information with it, so, yeah.
Okay. So.
Can I add one more thing?
Please.
We're just having to have this, we have a policy carry and all that, right? When you talk about expanding growth of the city, you have to realize the sewer is only about four feet deep up there. That's why they have to isolate it, so if you decide that you're going to expand north of the city, will you put in major listation? The pump, to the Broadway. So that's out there in the digging consideration, extending the main, I mean, it will be there.
Yep.
However, the sewer is going to have to be updated majorly if you decide to go that way in the future.
And, no, that, that's a waterway right there on the other side.
Well, you, you don't like.
So you're building a virtue over that, and that is not going to be cheap.
So.
So we're, we're.
So basically, we're just going to extend it for the ten hours on the AM, right?
So I'll kind of expand on that, I know we haven't really looked much to the north, um, so you don't own the property to the north of Broadway yet, so that's not in the city limits. All of our growth that we've looked at for a single family at least, um, residential, that's all been on the west side, so basically out to County Road Six is where we've, where we've looked at, um, basically south of the waterway is where we've laid out some, you know, draft layouts of that residential area previously, so. I would anticipate, you know, if you were to develop west of the city, you might go north off of Eleventh. Um, but I would probably say if you're, by the time you extend Broadway, it's probably twenty. Um, but I would probably say if you're, by the time you extend Broadway, it's probably twenty, thirty years.
Right.
Which you're going to street sign.
And at that time, yes, you're probably doing all of the utilities. So that's kind of the other consideration to.
So would you just extend it in capital or move it up? Would you shut up on the end as well?
We would put a hydrant on the end of it and then the, uh, Jason, if they ever need to, they would blow it off and, and flush it.
Oh, you got bad waters.
We had a year that we're gonna have to flush it.
Yep.
And we.
So the other option is, okay, we don't extend it. And then if that northwest lot ever, you know, does become a new house, then they would need to provide a water service back to the main in some fashion. So that would not be the cheapest thing to do at that time, but I mean, you could potentially bore it, um, and then tie back it.
Could we just step off, step off from where it's currently at? Take a route of curb stuff, you know, put a part of the, of the curb stuff towards that water to that lot and then, no?
No, you're too big enough to get a dig in through this. That's looking at cost.
You could, it's just.
You're gonna be under it for that one.
Yep.
You're really just paying. The whole way.
Yep.
And then we'll have to do your local services for. So this guy, this guy, the guy on the left side, because they're currently running along the water line, they probably Broadway for two minutes. They're underneath the sewer. So they'll have to come back, cause it's half back sixty-five, seventy-two prime. To the line of hydrant.
Yeah.
So then we're gonna have to put in two more, your stuff, plus your, your water. You know, go through the bacteria test. You're looking at sixty-eight to that.
Sure. Good.
Just to get bacteria test.
Yes.
Got it.
Okay.
So essentially you're adding up other slots. Got it. Well, well. Basically managing on the old project that was done in progress. Here, just we were unaware of it and gotta basically have to deal with it. That's all we do.
Yeah.
Yep.
Goes back to, let's do it right.
Yeah.
You know, let's do it right. You know, it hasn't been done right in the past, but time to get it right. So do we need a motion?
So.
Just say go ahead and.
I would like some direction on, you know, saying yes, let's do it.
I'm hoping to extend the water main from North Broadway to, uh, allow water to go to that, uh, furthest northwest lot.
A second. Motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye, opposed? Motion passed.
Sounds good. And so what'll happen with that is on the next meeting, what we'll do is we'll get a change order together. And we're just gonna extend, uh, we'll probably just include those costs in that along with a time extension. And they were thinking a week would be adequate for that. So, um, we will detail that out so that we have a clear understanding of what that cost is.
Act, acting mayor.
Yep, please.
So Reese, only if the resolution approving the project was so specific that this is a change to that.
Oh, yeah.
Could you also bring forward an amendment to that resolution? In other words, both a change order and an amendment to the resolution approving the project. Now, it may be that the project was not described so specifically that changing the wa, the water main by two hundred feet is, it needs to be amended, but you don't.
The description, we did do like the feasibility report, but the, the description of the project was just utility reconstruction, um, and storm sewer installation along the road reconstruction. So it wasn't, we had project, overall project boundaries, but that would fall within, you know, the sanitary list. So.
Thanks.
Yep. Um, so yeah, like I was mentioning, so they are still going on Broadway that they'll probably, in order to make the water main extension work, they'll probably start doing some storm sewer work more on the south side here. So you will see some storm sewer going. I believe they got all their structures and all their pipe here now. So they should be able to get going on those while they get some of the materials for the water extension. So that will be going, I would, I would imagine they're probably gonna be done with the storm sewer middle end of next week. And then they would probably start going on water on the north side. And then they would come in with the rock and the road base for that. So that's probably what you're looking at for the next few weeks, um, and then curb following, you know, the road base going down. So, um, that's really what they're looking at there. Um, I also do have pay application number one. So for a few folks that have not gone through a construction project yet, what we'll do is every single month, we will tabulate the quantities. And so that's what our project representative is doing. He's factoring quantities, tracking those every month, and then we'll review those. So this essentially covers the utility work that was done on Forest Street. Um, basically anything before the cutoff of the end of August. So.
Can we close down the one down here by his partner? We are waiting forever for him to build that. Well, that's a significant amount of money.
You are right.
Whoa, yeah.
All we have to do is get his warranty bond done and we can pay him.
Okay, okay.
So.
But we, that step off of the cycle, that's something we know with, that no longer exists in that account, right?
Yep. So, yeah, I, I know, I know that's. Yes, you are correct.
So at this point, when you look back at the, the previous, how many minutes, um, at our, uh, council meetings? I looked at the past three and spent on here. Do we, gonna make a decision like, so you're, are you calling Fitzgerald and, and talking to him about it? Or should I be working with them?
Yeah, I've been sending him emails.
Um, and so then I have direct contact with the office person. So I will send her a message tomorrow if the council approves of that.
Yeah.
That would be good.
That's all pretty soon.
Yep. So, yeah, if we can get that knocked out, we can be done with it.
The pay application is due immediately upon approval or?
So you generally have thirty days.
Thirty days?
Yep, from the application.
And will we have our bond in place, you think, in thirty days? So this will have to come out.
That's why we did that resolution last council meeting.
So this will probably have to come out of the general fund?
We'll take it on the general fund. Then we had that resolution last meeting, which then we'll reimburse it.
Yeah, okay. And I just wanna make sure we're clear on that and, and, uh, so.
So the total amount of work completed is that ninety-five, uh, seven forty-nine, ten. Um, so that's everything in the project that has been done to date that will eventually be paid. But what we'll do is until the end, we'll withhold five percent of retainage to make sure that everything is functioning well. And then that they actually complete the project and complete their punch list, um, before we release that retainage. And so that'll be at the very end. We'll hold on to that five percent. The state statute will tell us at the very end, um, if they have everything done and it's just some minor items, then we'll reduce their retainage amount if they are waiting on that. So, um, for the time being, for the next couple of months, I would anticipate that'll stay at five percent, um, of that cost. So, um, that would withhold that forty-seven, um, eighty-seven, forty-six. Um, so your total amount due is ninety thousand nine hundred and sixty-one dollars and sixty-four cents. And so I would request a motion to approve, um, the pay application.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second for the contractor's application for payment of ninety thousand nine hundred and sixty-one, sixty-four cents. If they need that, sixty. All those in favor? Aye, opposed? Motion passed.
Thank you. And that's all I had, unless there's any other questions I can answer here? Thank you.
Pre levy. I think that's where we're at. We all had a chance to look at that and, um, discuss that, um, if you look even at the ten percent, we're still gonna have to draw thirty, thirty what? Yeah, thirty-one thousand out of our general fund. Um.
But that was before selling these two homes, correct? So, well, pro, pro, proposing to sell.
If you want to just let me, uh, speak a little bit and then I can.
I could have a good idea.
Style it in real quick. So as you, uh, have mentioned, we are, um, looking at thirty-one thousand three hundred and seventy-five dollars, three thousand, or thirty-one thousand three hundred and seventy-five dollars. Yep, eight to the right percent. Sure. Um, meaning from what your revenue is on the bottom half of your page versus your expenses. So with that being said, so you're only looking at column number, uh, with the, with the ten percent. Obviously, I know it's very scary after talking with George, with talking with, um, Lori, former clerk, um, that there is enough money in our, um, general fund. So that paper looks like this, which is all the way in the back of your book. Um, if you were to take a look at this, the top line is our general fund, um, in our checkbook, which is nine hundred and thirty-four thousand eighty-nine dollars and some change. Therefore, you would have enough money to cover, um, that thirty-one thousand, um, that were short. Then along with, um, the addition of Broadway Street going north with that water. So we needed to put some debt services in here. So that's gonna be, um, because I knew Reese was gonna talk to Fitzgerald at the five o'clock hour, but me doing the budget and I, I'm done at four o'clock. I called Gary as well and I said, shoot me a high price so that I'm prepared. And he gave me a thirty thousand. So we can work with a round number of sixty-one thousand dollars. We would then be potentially short. That does not include the lot sale from yesterday and that does not include the lot sale from today. So you needed to sell, um, one to two houses before February in order to make your bond payment. Now, with that being said, we have these two. So could we use one more that would offset it all? Absolutely. So with these two being, um, sold and if the paperwork is processed and then continue to move forward, we would not look for the sixty-one thousand dollars being short. But if I had a crystal ball and that's all of what this levy is, is getting into the future, it would not be working for the city of good you. So that's where we're at. You, you can't predict that these lot sales are actually still gonna go forward because they don't have this dotted line. The one, um, from today that I was notified about, they're signing on the paperwork this fall. Like they already know, they're already working with, um, Wayne Gadyon on it. They're not, um, signing officially until December, which this budget does not go into effect until January. But that's after our deadline of having the pre levy and the certified levy. Okay? So with that being said, my recommendation for the council is that the levy would be, um, one million ninety-five dollars. About one million ninety-five thousand nine hundred and seven dollars and seventy-seven cents. Um, in a forcey that we go into a situation that those do not continue to go through, it's been looked at by myself, um, former clerk. Um, Dick was looking at this, this information before he officially resigned. And he said that there's plenty of money in that reserve, that there's no reason why, even if we had, because we have to make the first, we already knew, we had to make the first bond payment of this new, um, street project coming out of the general fund. That's why we have the resolution to move over to there. We would still have thirty-one thousand dollars in there, um, to be able to make that payment. So also with George leaving, um, I had a call with him today telling him about this new lot sale. Because, um, as I was talking to him last Wednesday before I left for my training, um, I said, George, how are we gonna come up with the thirty-one? And he said, the only easy way to do it without having to continue to go up another twelve percent, um, so that it hits with all the tax dollars. You have so much, you don't have so much. You have enough for right now for the current situation to continue to use your general fund money that is not aligned to a certain project at this point. Does that make sense? So we hope that these two lots continue to move forward and, well, what'd you say, six for the year? Well, more than six because Bigelow took three sections of those townhouses. And so that was how many? And then I know that there's been four houses that would be including the two yesterday's and today's or Monday's and today's. So there's a possibility that one more could be sold between now and February, which in a, anyway, we're still having revenue coming in. So when you go ahead and look at this, this sheet here with all of our balances on here, you have to remember we still have, um, the other part of the, um, levying, uh, property taxes will be coming in in December. So that will be another approximately of seventy-seven thousand. So it's, you know, and we still have money generating coming in from the sewer and the water. And, you know, so our funds, some of them look negative, but overall you can see that the ending balance of our checkbook is one point three million dollars. So.
And acting mayor and council, um, I don't know if I heard Jill say it, but of course, the number in green, if that's the number you pick, that number can't go up, but it can go down for the final levy. So you, you need to, you need to be at this stage of the game reasonably confident in the number you pick, knowing that you can pay it back if you get more money.
Last meeting, we were pretty comfortable at ten percent. It could go down and that's not happening.
But that's because I had the assistance on finding what the numbers were gonna be on the street project and the, uh, debt services. And my, or former city attorney that worked the numbers was no longer in assistance and trying to gather new information that we had to table at this. So again, you, I would like you to, um, take a consideration on approving it tonight. However, uh, we do have until next council session to make the, the change. But not, your numbers aren't gonna change between now and then. The only thing that can change is if you want me to do a twelve or a fifteen percent and possibly have to see your taxes go to twelve or fifteen percent, which then, you know, if we sell these lots and they're going, and they are selling and gonna be sold, then you can drop it back down. So if you want to see numbers and go to a twelve or fifteen percent in case these houses don't work out, if you want to look at it that way, I can do that. Or I feel with confidence between with George, because he does all of our bonds with all of our finances, that this is the number that we should go with.
And acting mayor and council, are, Jill, are you okay with if they wanna move forward, they can just make a motion?
I would love it.
And you can, you can convey that to the county? You don't need a resolution?
I don't need a resolution. I need a mo, yeah, motion, pass it.
Okay.
Yeah. So our, our total tax increase is gonna be that sixty-six thousand number at the bottom, um, tax levy increase. The last, yeah. So that's what the city's looking for. Riving dollar increase for the city.
And we're safe enough to say with ten percent, you think? Cause I, I believe that's what we plan on doing anyway.
So if you really looked back at twenty twenty-two columns, so it's the column right before the red, your total income was nine hundred and ninety-one thousand. So saying ten percent sounds scary, right? But if you take that nine hundred and ninety thousand and then you, you moved just over a million, a million six, uh, million sixty-four thousand. Um, if you look at those numbers versus the ten percent, because it's, it's spread over everybody. So it's not just gonna be just the houses. It's businesses and everybody. So again, then which, oh, question Wayne had is how much is this gonna affect your properties? I won't know that information until October. So that's why you get that orange piece of paper in the mail. And then it makes everybody cringe because this is possibly what your taxes are gonna be. So it's either that number or it goes down because the county needs, the city needs the taxes, school needs the taxes and the county needs the taxes. That's how they get their numbers. So if you're confident at liking these numbers, I know I'm gonna make you cringe. However, the only thing I can do different is give you a, a few more percentages higher that would ultimately just work in that thirty-one thousand that were short and the sixty, um, the thirty thousand dollars for that street project. So that's the only, the numbers that are gonna change. So. And as you can see, again, we have nine hundred and thirty-six thousand in your general fund.
Would this be a time to talk about how we might, um, increase some revenue? Like you, we had talked about.
So, so yeah, you can. So if you wanted to go down to the last half of your page, so it goes LGA, so that's, that's not gonna change. That's just what the, the government's gonna give us. Um, the street assessments, that's when people pay in, um, their, if they assess their taxes. Tobacco and park rental. Um, so the tobacco, um, so the, both bars and C store, um, are the only ones that sell the tobacco. Um, they're fifty dollars in the park rental. Of course, park rental is, is, is a pretty good guess. Um, but that park is, is rented out, um, from, uh, May and that we still had some last weekend. Um, so at twenty-five dollars, um, park rental. So that would be one thing, um, if you want.
Raise.
Even if you did it for five dollars, five dollars is five dollars. But if you're, if you're nervous about the, um, the income. Um, so that's one possibility. Um, the next one is city hall rent income. So that would come, come from the gas commission and he currently pays five hundred dollars a month.
And that five hundred dollars law covers computer like utilities. There's.
And that five hundred dollars covers computer like utilities, or is he?
That covers him having this office space here.
But that also covers like using the current city.
Twenty-five dollars covers the rent.
I don't know what we want, I, I think, and I don't think we have to decide that tonight, but, but yeah, do we wanna raise money by what we rent our pavilions for, you know, or raise some income, right? Picnic tables was another thing that we had talked, we let people use picnic tables currently, you know, for their family celebrations or to take to their home for their graduations and that kind of thing. Would we, and then as Jill is saying, what if they come back broken, we don't know, they need repair? Would that be another area we wanna look at to help balance our budget? And I don't know if you guys can think of anything else too that might help, you know? And I have worries, concerns, I mean, I hate to raise fees, I hate to charge people more, but at the same time, we have to kinda keep our budget under control. And if you look down the road, Jason will talk to us about his needs, you know? And for maintenance and for the maintenance department, street projects, I mean, there's just a whole list of things, you know, that we've all looked at and talked about that's gonna need to be done. So, and then we're gonna need a way to do it, so.
Yeah, it's happening here too on the report, some of the sidewalks too, we're in trouble, a lot of sidewalks, and if just one person fall and hurt themselves, it's not good. And that's something else we have to bug even to.
So, so off of that note then too, these numbers are just me plugging them in based off of what was twenty-twenty-two was. So you can still move these numbers around. That's just me applying from what they had been expensed to be able to cover what we had spent. So you can change those numbers around, it's not gonna change up the total that we're asking for. So if you, if you wanna move all of the money right into the sidewalk and spend a million dollars on sidewalks, you guys, that's your decision. Yeah, exactly.
Maybe we can get grants for sidewalks.
Yeah.
Yeah, there you go. So I just brought that up for some to think about, I guess, and maybe look at another meeting, and we don't need to decide that now, but we should have a resolution for the levy, oh, motion for the levy.
And this is really easy, none of this stuff, and it's not a gift, it's, it's.
It's not a want, it's needs, yeah. Well, I'm sure we have to go with the ten percent.
You have a second? I'll second. So we have a motion and a second to go with a ten percent levy increase, any other discussion? Dissection?
So just to be doubly clear, that's the million ninety-five thousand nine hundred and seven and seventy-seven cents. Yep, okay.
That's what we planned on going with.
And that's the number that Jill has to report, so.
We talked about that last meeting, we decided we'd go with the ten, and then we hoped it would go down, but I just.
Not looking good. Do we have a motion and a second? All those in favor? Aye, opposed? Motion passes. And we have resolution five oh nine Park Avenue, public auction. Did you hope we got a chance to review that?
Yeah, well, how was that? Confused on that, yeah.
First one I've ever seen too, that I remember.
So the House, Jason Menical, do you remember who owned that?
Steve's money, oh, yeah.
Okay, so, so nobody wanted it, nobody took care of it, the county took it over for tax payment. And so they own it, and it's not livable, it's not restructable. So they're, they're putting it up for auction, so we just need to get them the approval from the city that they did.
Oh, I see, I was wondering how the city's tied in.
How do they auction that anyway?
Well, it's either, yeah, it's either gonna go to public or private auction, right?
And it's gonna go public, that's what they suggested.
Well, yeah, we have no choice but to let them go forward with what they need to do, so.
Unless you wanna take it and the city has to own it and fix it up and condemn it and rip it down.
So, yeah, I'll motion to make that, let the county take care of it because it's, it's something I kind of told them, that's what that was about.
Do we have a second to the motion for the public auction for the county?
I second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye, opposed? Motion passes. And I'm just gonna bypass, I think, Nick. No, he's up next. You're gonna, are you giving the report too?
No.
No? Okay.
As you all know, this is my resignation, this is my last day. I put in my resignation two weeks ago, there is up there. Just wanna thank you first of all for hiring me. Two years went by fast, it's crazy. Seems like just yesterday I was in there doing my interview. I built a lot of great relationships with the community, a lot of great people, and a lot of good experience, and I couldn't be happier to work for a department and work for a better city. And I guess if you guys have any questions or concerns, you can talk to me after. That's it.
Glad to see you go, I think you've been great.
You live in Lake City as well, don't you? I mean, that's kinda short you commute considerably to.
About one minute drive, I mean. Driving's a problem, driving's. Yeah, right, oh, yeah.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, guys. Yep, appreciate it. Do we need to, do we need to accept that resignation? Do we need a motion to accept the resignation?
A motion.
No, second. All those in favor? Aye, opposed? Bye now. Good U County Attorney contract, hopefully we got a chance to look that over. And that's just fully discussed, I think, we've already talked about it.
We just had to get it in, and then it's all, we just gotta get a resolution so they can sign it off, I don't know.
That's correct.
So then, in that first paragraph there, then Bob would take over in the when the, when the county wouldn't be able to help us out, whatever that would be, I mean, I don't, under one of these situations. And they talk about hiring somebody else and all of that.
Yeah, so acting mayor and council, the letter, which by the way, looks fine, and I think the rates probably are pretty reasonable, they spell out in the letter that what they can do for you as your prosecutor, what the county can do for you as your prosecutor, doesn't include civil representation, zoning ordinance, enforcement actions, civil nuisance, et cetera. That's all stuff that my firm would do, and we would do other things too, but the things they can't do that they've listed here, we would do and can do, so, yeah.
Yeah, and the rate seems reasonable.
Probably as good as we're gonna get.
Right, you know, I mean, yeah, we just, that's another thing, it's not a want, it's a need, you have to have it.
Yes, I agree.
Josh, obviously you work most in depth of this. Does anything concern you about this?
I don't know, are they gonna be, well, if we have ordinance violations, just regular ordinance violations, if they don't pay them, are they actually gonna work for some?
Well, that's where Bob, you said you would step in correctly, that's where you're.
Yeah, mayor and council, no, as far as what your chief is talking about, I mean, the county would have to, to the extent you have a criminal violation, a misdemeanor violation, that has to be prosecuted through the county attorney if you go with this contract. I think the chief is asking, will they actually do that for small level local ordinance violations? You know, my experience has been that counties are difficult to work with on those issues, but Goodview among counties is not that. I mean, they, they try to take seriously the partner communities that they do prosecution for, so.
But I mean, if they're under a contract and weren't paying, but a month, but they should be obligated to.
But the chief's raising a fair concern, which is that how, how excited are they about doing, you didn't have your dog on a leash kinda stuff, and, you know, so.
Yeah, and I know, I know, I actually talked to, talked to him, the Goodview County Attorney. And, you know, he did state that they would like to see it. I don't know how to state it, how has he stated? They do prosecute them, but, you know, under certain offenses, if there is a, you know, if they want to see this, don't do it again if you're a person who is obviously doing it. I don't know, I don't know what the ordinance would be, I'd say.
Nobody wants to get a ticket to get, say, you want to be a bad news.
Exactly.
We get a lot of warnings.
Exactly, and so, and so basically, I think that's what he says, as long as you're not first offense, giving someone a ticket, which I don't foresee happening, you know, that they, they would be offered to prosecute it.
Totally, and acting mayor, I said at the meeting I was at last time, and just to be clear about it, I mean, the, the upside of using a county to be your prosecutor is that they can do it efficiently, they're at the county seat, and they can do prosecutions efficiently. The downside, just to be upfront about it, is if you've hired a private firm like my firm to be your prosecutor, you can direct their resources. You can tell them what prosecutions to focus on, what things that your cops and your prosecutors focus on, you control that to a large extent. And when you use the county, the county is gonna use a uniform policy that they apply across the county as far as their priorities for prosecutions. So I think that's what the chief is raising.
I have pieces from Prairie Analyst when I worked out there, those were five years ago, that are still popping up today. I'm getting contacted, just throw that out there.
And you know, this is a one-year contract?
Right.
So it's like, let's.
Well, it's a one-year contract, we can end it anytime without any clause holding us to it.
Yeah, so that too, yeah, so.
If they, if we clearly, you know, I wanna hear if there's any problems with it, we should feel clear because obviously, you're gonna be the one that's gonna have the issues if anything happens, because you guys are doing it.
Hopefully they notify me, so. I could be waiting for two years if I know it never happened, so.
Well, we have to, I mean, we have to get a.
I think so.
We'll make a motion if we go with these guys for a trial for a year.
So we have a motion and a second to accept the contract from Goodview County for prosecuting attorney. All those in favor? Aye, opposed? Motion passes. Public Works, you're up. Need some good news, so you could just.
So I'm gonna skip over the first one, cause Reese talked about it, the storm structure. We got the water tower cleaned out on Monday. Everything seemed to go well, I did not get a report back from them, I know there are some repairs that need to be done, wasn't anything super major. They did say that we have good water in town, cause usually they find three to five yards of sand, there was hardly any sediment, and this one has never been cleaned out. So we got their water samples back today, the tower's back online as of this afternoon. I don't know if you guys noticed, we did, Todd and I and Summer Help and Kyle, we did the mastic on the streets, tried to fill in some of the gaps.
Looked great.
Got that done. The pool, we got that shut down, we drained it out, we're gonna have to put some more water in it before winter, so it doesn't break, but we're leaving it so we can get some of the leaves and stuff out of it, so they don't get so rotten in there by spring. I also wanna point out, it was a very good summer. The staff did a good job, all the communications, was a joy working with them, made it go extremely well. I know Carrie talked last time about picnic tables, we have a few that are getting bad in the park. Some people wanna donate to replace them, we took one out. I got some prices back after I wrote this, you're looking at two to three thousand dollars for vinyl ones that are made out of steel. I know it's something you need to think about maybe replacing or maybe not replacing them all, you wanna reach out from help from Lions or J C's. I know there's some citizens that are considering donating a table, but that's what you're looking at. And I don't know if I wanna go with the concrete design, I think I'd rather go with like a steel with a vinyl cover on it, seems like it would be lasting a little longer.
Maybe not be as heavy?
Maybe not as heavy, maybe a little easier to clean. So we can bring that up again, I can get some better prices, it just took a while to get ahold of these people since the last meeting. If that's something they wanna look at, we can, you know, iron it out even throughout the, I mean, it's fall now, we're at this winter, maybe bring it back.
A little bit of a timeframe.
Yep. Then I know Jason pointed out that I wrote in here that the flow meter in the sewer plant's not working, I know I've talked to Michael about it too. Doug worked with me, he thought he could get it repaired, we tried everywhere. We got a bid back for them to come in and replace it, it's too expensive, so I told them, we'll install it ourselves, which we can. It's still about forty-two hundred dollars for the first bid, second bid I have not got back. They're all in Duluth at their conference today, the people that were gonna come do it, Reese knows about that too. Cause I reached out to some other people and they're all up there. A W A L. So they're hoping to get here tomorrow or Friday, and give me another quote. It's, it's a required thing, I know Wayne went for the tour yesterday, I pointed out to him that that wasn't working. And then I did throw in some things here, just because you were talking about budgets, some things to consider. I know Carrie at the last meeting talked about trading off the John D. or lawnmower, so I did do some legwork, it's five years old, I think I threw that in there. That would be just to trade the deck and the machine, and it's all laid out in your papers that I sent with you. Like I said, it, it's been working well, things to consider for next year. I also got a list of streets, which I just took off Reese's pavement report, because, and I can, if you wanna send it down. I didn't have a lot of time to get that all figured out with everything we had going on. But it's things that need to be considered, crack fill and doing some seal coating, just to keep up on the maintenance, cause we actually have a lot of good streets, there are some that aren't the best, but for the most part, they're in pretty good shape. So if we could get some seal coating done, we could go in with the county, I know they reached out to us for twenty-twenty-four with some of their projects, that they'd be interested in working with us to do seal coating and crack filling, or possibly are us, we could do it too, rent the machine. There are some options there. Other things to keep in mind for the budgets in the next coming years, I don't know, I'm new to this, if there's plans for this, we have the plow truck that is not in the best shape, the sander's getting wore out, I did do some pricing, you're looking at seventy-five hundred bucks for a new one just for the sander alone, the box is bad and the wiring's not the best shape. So we could go to public surplus in the next year or two, fifteen to twenty thousand is what most have been selling for. So I put that on there, I also put on there, we don't have anything to lift or do any type of landscape work digging, so I put that in there for a skid loader, I reached out to get some prices. I mean, you're looking at, I haven't gotten, nobody's gotten back to me, but as you know, forty, fifty thousand dollars is in the ballpark for a decent sized skid loader for a town this size.
The tractor, is that just for snowing wool with all the county stuff?
Yeah, just for snowing wool. And they use it to load their trucks.
Okay, alright.
So we can use it to plow.
Sure.
But then in the spring, they take it back. So it's just, I mean, we have a way to rent one now, but it would be nice to have for other, I mean, there's a lot of uses you could use it for. I mean, instead of shoveling.
And a back saver.
Right.
And a time saver.
Time saver, unloading freight. Doing small landscape projects or some small dirt work, playgrounds, plus plowing snow you could use it for. A lot of stuff, get some attachments.
Well, you got a skid loader, you have, you have a hundred uses for it.
Even, even for the gas, the trencher's getting bad, and I know that's more Kyle's department, but you could rent one to do a lot of the services and still keep his for getting up close to buildings. Like I said, this is not all a must-have, I just wanna point it out, some of the things that we're looking for down the road in the maintenance department. And I don't know, maybe Reese could add in on some of that seal coat stuff on cost, I haven't looked at it that close.
And it's a kind of thing, you know, we were kind of trying to figure out some budgets every year, relatively consistent. But I know we've historically done seal coating, padding, whatever you need, just to keep the streets up, so that you don't let them go too far, and then we reconstruct, so extending the. Attaching whatever we need, just to keep the streets up, so that you don't let them go too far, and then we reconstruct, so extending the pavement life.
Even crack filling, if we could go through and crack fill like Eleventh Street, some of the newer ones. That would help a lot to keep them cracks from getting so large like we had with, well, Fourth Avenue. Some of the ones we mastic up past would be Sixth Street.
If you're able to get in with the county and add to that, we're gonna have a lot more quantity, also you should see a lot better price.
Yeah, if we wait till they're in the area doing it too, that will save.
Yeah, I mean, it's the same thing you did with the middle of the project.
And, and they have it, uh, we have till October to decide if we wanna go in with them.
But this is until twenty twenty-four, you said, correct?
Yeah, I believe it was twenty twenty-four of the year, cause I think, unless it was mistyped, and I can contact Cory. To make sure that it's right, but I'm fine with going in with them, they would, they would charge a fee to oversee the work. But then they would work it in on their schedule, just like if, if you guys like some of the mastic that we did. If you wanna get some more next year, we could probably go in with them and buy a pallet or two to redo some more, if we got some bad cracks come next spring. So, it's just, like I said, I threw them things out there, so I'm considered.
Going with the county, we're talking for next year, is what you're thinking, or this year?
I'm gonna have to email Cory, cause it said twenty twenty-four on the contract they sent us, and maybe it was a misprint a little longer than that, okay. So, cause I mean, they might be two years out on their planning already.
But we probably have some crack filling that needs to be done before that, yeah.
And that's where you said we could rent the machine, you.
We could possibly, I know, we could do it. We would have, Todd and I could do it with help, with maybe Kyle or Summer Help, we could totally do it ourselves, I know they've rented it out before, and maybe. They wouldn't want to anymore, if they're offering this program, it's, phone call or an email, we can find out.
This fall, are we gonna have to do some?
No, there won't be, anything be done this fall.
Okay.
It would be for next, next year, twenty twenty-three.
Yeah.
So, and I just highlighted some of the streets on there that would need it, and we missed, I know twenty twenty-two, but. We can, uh, start next year with some of the ones that are in need of it.
Yeah, yeah.
So, any other questions you got for me, or?
So, so you might be able to get your name in to be able to do this?
Well.
Next year, if they allow.
They offer it to every community, yeah, and I can email Cory and.
Okay, then you were talking twenty twenty-four.
That's the email data. Yeah.
But I mean, for you to rent it.
Oh, we could possibly rent it next year, to do some crack filling.
Now, you did that this year, didn't you?
That was a different type of material, the, the, the stuff we did this year had more P rock in it, so it filled in the bigger cracks. I mean, it's not a, some of them need to be milled out and repaved, deep grind, we don't have a milling machine, we'd have to hire somebody to come in and do that. But, the stuff we did was mostly, like a, it has a lot more rock in it, the crack fill's just oil, it seals up the smaller cracks. Keep from water getting in there.
Those are narrow little cracks.
Like, yeah, like if you went up on Eleventh Street, you would see a lot of them, the narrower cracks, viola lane has a bunch. Um, not viola, the one that goes up past, uh. Kerry, I can't think of that street now, Joyce Avenue, yep, that one, there's a bunch in there. Some of the stuff that, oh, over there on Elm Court, there's a bunch, they're kinda all over, there is some on viola. It's all over town, you got the smaller ones that need to be crack filled with oil, that, that would keep a lot of the moisture. Water and stuff out of there, I mean, you could probably go through a pallet of it, maybe two in this town, if we could rent it. Then we could do it ourselves, I mean, we'd have to wait till summer when we got extra help, cause it takes four people. Or we could get a part-time guy to help us out on a Friday or whenever. So, it's all things we can look at, and I can be in contact with the county and see, it worked well to use their mastic, so.
Yeah, it's good too.
Yeah.
I did notice on Second Avenue, right past Ed Stern's place, there's, are we missing a small cover on the?
We've, we looked at that, it tipped over.
Oh, okay.
So, we're gonna get a bigger one in there.
Sure, no, I just, it didn't look right to me.
No, I don't know, it flipped over before.
Weird, yeah, okay.
It's, it's got a piece broke on the bottom of it.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
So.
Skid loader is a good, well, it's all tapped off too.
Alrighty, thank you.
So I just wanna bring up this time, no, go ahead, not, for the, for the council. We don't have a budget committee. And when we're looking at all these things that are gonna need to be upgraded, uh, purchased and that kinda thing. I think we need to start thinking about a budget committee, and figuring out how we're gonna afford these things, and, uh, how we're gonna pay for them. Uh, rather, it's kinda been. We'll just do it at the time and hopefully have the fun for it, you know, really.
That was one of the craziest things when I got out of council, that nothing's budgeted, you know, normally, uh, where I work at the island. You go, oh, I want X, Y, Z are things that I wanna budget for, then you get approval for that, and then it's budgeted in to your general fund. Whereas here, it's, if you should general fund, okay, let's see what we can spend.
Right.
What do we need, it's, it's, you know, like if I did a health project, I'm not just gonna wake up in the morning and go, I got the money to do it, let's go do it!
But part of that is, you, you came in and partway through the year, so you.
I did, yes.
You didn't get to listen to the, the pre-conversations leading up to a budget, I didn't see the budget until now for my first time too. And so now, with the new Public Works and better communication, more communication, that this is what they're offering now, so this is. Like, they're not expecting it tomorrow or next week, so then we have that, that information.
Yeah.
So, if I can add this real quick, um, in my clerk's training last week, that was one of the biggest things that I took, well. I took like away a lot of things, but that was one of the things that I took away from there is, is a lot of the cities. All of the cities were, are, are our population and smaller, I think, two thousand and lower. Um, is, they have committees for everything, they have a budget committee, they have a park committee, they have a fire relief committee, and then. They go by the appointments as well, but with, within them, they still have a co-partner with, which would be one of you other council members. And then they would come into City Hall and have that discussion, so that once these things come up. It's not a shock to all four of you plus the mayor, so that you have more communication and not necessarily just coming into council. Twice a month, and then all of a sudden, boom, everybody has to, to deal with it, to think about it, which then likely would get you to stop. Um, wh- wh- which would get away from having to, um, possibly, um, tabling it. Is because you would have done your research, and you've done your fact-checking, and, and then presented, so you would have the committee, and then it wouldn't be just one person's idea. And then coming here and trying to explain it, so you form the committee ahead of time, so, but that was a good point to bring up this, so.
And I'm not trying to, you know, I'm not, I, I know I joined halfway through the year, so of course, you know, and I'm not trying to say it was. Any one person's or department's fault, but it just seems so odd that, you know, as I'm talking and. We're going through the budget, when I first started, even I was talking about the budget, cause I was trying to understand, you know, how this all went. Um, when we get to see the budget and have to prove the bills and everything.
Yeah, and then, and that's another thing that's hard too, is when we have new council members, cause Patrice, Patrice is new, Jason's relatively new, you're new. And then, then you would have those committees, and then you would have the notes, like, this is what we've been working on since twenty twenty. And, you know, we're two years into it, so you have the notes to say, hey, we've been working on this, and we need to make a decision, instead of. The, the construction, for instance, hey, we've been talking about it for a year to a year and a half, and it, it keeps getting talked about it for today. And then now it will be discussed until the last one council member brings it up, comes in into City Hall, we won't talk about it again until two weeks. So, perfect example.
And I think we've gotten to the point where, between what's going on in the world, and inflation, and the cost of things. And the city growing, and, uh, are having more need, it was just my thought that we do need. We need to have a budget committee, we need to put numbers together, we need to plan out ahead, you know, rather than like you say. You know, just say, well, we need it, let's see, we got, yeah, we got money, let's just, you know. So, yep, uh, just a thought, and maybe, we put, what, committees together in January?
Yeah, we can add that to the agenda when you do the appointments.
Probably should. I think. Okay, that's what I, on that. Are we ready for the police update? Okay.
Okay.
More good news.
Oh, absolutely, uh, I'm gonna give you lots of good news. I'll try.
We didn't get a piece of paper on this.
No.
Okay, I, I was like, I was taken off guard, I.
No, just giving you an update.
Okay.
There you go, so, um, yesterday at ten AM, I ended up meeting with, uh, Minnesota Post Board. They had come down, they had an audit for the police department, where they go through our records, our file, our training. Uh, I ended up meeting with, uh, Mike Monzru, so, he came down, he audited the police department, went through all of our records. And, uh, he said it was probably one of the fastest audits he's ever had to do, cause everything was just presented and there. Said we were on a really tight ship, and you guys should be proud of it, he actually said he wished he was here today to talk to you, just to say that. And then he will be sending a letter to Jill and myself, so, for the fact that we passed, so. There's some positive news, okay, so, I, let, let's knock that one off, there we go.
Yeah.
Okay, this one's not negative. Okay, so, uh, myself and, uh, I've been talking with Derek Quackling, the fire chief. Um, the one thing that we do know is that, we've been told for the years, over the years, that there's an emergency management book for this city. I have yet to see it, um, we've been told that it's at the fire department, they've been yet to see it. So, one thing that we're actually gonna do is, we're gonna start working on putting an emergency management book together. So, we're working together with that, and we're actually gonna be talking with the Goody County Emergency Management Coordinator. At putting this whole entire book together and getting it worked on, uh, so that, the, the book will literally consist of anything from evacuation plans. If something happens to the anhydrous tanks, all the way to mass casualties and explosion. Uh, wh- wh- what do we do in any situation, we have a flood, we have a tornado, who responds to where and what? And we're gonna get it all put in order, hopefully, so we don't wanna be caught with our pants down.
Hey Josh.
Yes, ma'am.
I think there's a file that's old stuff, that we should find.
Yes, ma'am, we'll work on that, um. Okay, third, not, not negative, uh, to your guys' last comment, um. What you guys were just talking about, putting, uh, uh, committees together and whatever else. Uh, when I was talking to the chief of Canyon, or sorry, Cannon Falls, I was talking to chief up there. And he was saying one thing that we absolutely do need is when we, uh, it's a list of all the equipment that we actually have. Uh, how long it lasts, and expiration, basically shelf life on our equipment, and then replacement dates, something to actually throw ahead. So I just wanted to throw that out, when you guys were talking, I thought about that, and I can actually get a list, it's a, basically a template of how to put everything in. So, I can talk to him about it, yes, sir.
And I would have under my concerns, uh, for maintenance, to maybe start doing the same thing for us.
Alright.
A PM, what is our PM schedule for our equipment, uh, what are your duties, you know, and something written down. So that, um, you know, in thirty years from now when you retire, um. The next person taking over.
I think so, Tim.
You know, has an idea of what he, they need to do, you know, so, and that, that certainly doesn't have to be done, you know. Uh, tomorrow or within a month or anything like that, but, yeah.
It is, it's, it's done years here, um, there we go. Uh, the fourth one, uh, not negative, uh, but with Nick going out the door, uh, with him resigning today. Uh, I was, uh, gonna see about opening the application process, I was told I actually had to go to you guys to do that. Um, to fill the position, so.
Yeah, is that something you would post, Jill, is that how that goes?
Yeah.
Yeah.
If you, to, to replace his, his position?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, uh, the last time we ended up having the position opened, uh, you guys have opened, I don't know how the process goes with. With how everything's, cause things are gonna start going right. Um, either way, I ended up contacting the post, and having the position put up in there, then I put it on our Facebook page. And it opened it up for a two-week span.
Yeah, yeah, so, so typically, I would do it for the, the, the city side, but since his is a more professional role. Uh, he would have to, you know, I'll work with him to get the writing, and it's, we just have to, you would just have to say yes, that you're willing to fill that position. You just need the, the approval to be able to do it, and then he'll fix it for you.
So that I can open it up for two weeks and start bringing in applicants.
Yeah, can't just deputize me like Mayberry?
You gave me two bad days in a row, and I'll just give it to you.
Okay, no thanks.
The council, they, you're, you're thinking we should add another officer then, replacement?
Oh, certainly, I think so.
Yeah, I mean, we have that.
Yeah, we afford it.
We just did, we just worked.
No, I, I, uh, I'm serious.
Yeah, we're not adding, we're replacing.
We're replacing, then.
We're replacing, okay, but do we need three?
Well, I think, yeah, yeah.
So, so as a person who's in a department of two currently. And was in a department of three, it makes it really hard to get an invitation to start off, because those two phones behind me. Including my, I have personal phone and two more phones, they're with me twenty-four seven over there. Twenty-four seven, I have both those phones, and the police are no different, Josh, you carry your phone everywhere?
Everywhere, always on, even on vacation, I got called four times in one night on vacation, and I answered all four times.
Yep, I was on vacation in Chicago three years ago, and I got an alarm.
I don't care if I'm in China, I'll answer.
So, I really think for peace of mind and to not burn a police force out, I think we need to. Um, and I, I'm in a department of two, I was in a department of one for two months. I almost put my job to bed, but I was just so sick of it, so.
And my, my thoughts are, with the crime rate, what, eighty-six percent below state average?
Thank you very much.
Uh, there's some proof that, uh, three officers are, are helping our community.
Absolutely.
Though, and I look at it, you know, the world is crazier than ever, as far as I can tell, in my sixty-some years, and I'm not saying the whole thing. But sixty-some years, the world is crazier than ever, um, even in our, our small town. And I think Josh would be able to point that out, as far as the number of incidents and drug, uh. Problems and, and, and everything else, and so, I am in favor, you know, of seeing three officers.
Yeah, and I know it, it took a long time to get through.
Yes, it is, a lot of argument, a lot of, not argument, sorry, discussions. I wasn't really prepared, uh, for going back into that discussion tonight, so I don't have any of my other packets with me, so that's why I'm just sitting here quietly.
So, that's right.
I remember I took on a lot of feedback from the public too, and there was a lot of people negative about it, but that kinda went away, that's.
Yeah, they have.
Uh, when I first started here five years ago, there was a lot of negative, and it turned to mostly positive from almost everybody. I mean, there's still gonna be the few people that you're just never gonna change, or, I mean, yeah, but either way, we've had nothing but positive. I've had a lot of good feedback, so. Yeah.
You have a motion?
A motion.
A second, I have a motion and a second to, uh, go ahead and advertise for, uh, another officer, replacement officer, all those in favor? I, both, pass it, keep doing a good job, Josh. My concerns, uh, and I already said a bunch of them, uh, the budget committee, uh, uh, a PM, um. Schedule and, and what are, what are the duties, you know, of, of our maintenance people, so, and like I said, I, that takes. I worked in a factory for twenty years, and, yeah, they came up to me, and all of a sudden, one point, and, and it didn't sound good, cause I thought now they're. Gonna look at getting somebody else, but, um, and yeah, I had to go through and put together the, the PM schedule. The, uh, what are, what do I do every day, uh, schedule and that kinda thing, and, and, uh, so. It's a good thing to have, it's a good thing.
I know, I can update mine already.
Okay.
Done months on the job, and I can, you know, add to what was.
Okay.
Once there.
Okay.
I think I should go for everybody, not just maintenance.
Yeah, good, good point, any, do they have council concerns? Covered a lot of stuff, so. Covered a lot of stuff, so. Yeah, me too. I'd agree. Anything, Patricia?
No.
No?
It's been enough.
Okay.
I guess maybe not concerned, but a comment I was gonna have, uh, talking to Jason, uh, it sounds like the street practice is going pretty well so far, uh, which is, which is good, you know, um, so, I mean, I know there was some, uh, worry about history of doing the job, but it sounds like it's going good. So, that's always good here.
It's been going really good.
And ISG is here every day, yeah, yeah, they're here, I, I've seen them and, I've been out there and, yeah. And, uh, they're overseeing, I think that helps, and, and then along with the idea that they got a new construction manager, right? And, uh, that's probably helping, and, uh, I mean, there's been some glitches.
Did you feel the crew at, or working up there at tobacco, they've been super good?
Alright, so then we're moving on to public concerns. Mr. Tiptke.
One person, twelve. So, um, my concern here is, I guess, Dan Tiptke, um, on the building team group for St. Luke Church.
Yeah.
Um, we've moved forward with the property, we've got it, uh, parking lots in, on this level. Hope to build next year, we got capital campaigns really good. Um, we're kinda running a little, uh, little, uh, deal, it kinda needs more. Um, had some different conversation, went around, uh, side by side, wondering where, uh, who's gonna furnish what? Um, we know we get it up in the lift station, uh, and we're gonna pump two of the lift stations so we can go under the dry run with sewer. That's, our, our pipe is already pre- welded out there, um, ready to go to lay in and do that. Um, we, uh, been some discussion on who brings, uh, you know, are we gonna go right from the end of the street at the city, the city hydrant at the end of, uh, whatever street that is?
Eleventh Street.
Eleventh Street, or, um, Ben Carey and, uh, Jason, Reese, we were in, uh, having a phone conversation one day and, uh, or we wanna bring it up, Kerry wanted to bring it across the dry run, to get it across the dry run, so we, when you guys do go north, you don't have to, um, you don't have to, uh, dig through the dry run again, and so, um, we just wanna put our water and sewer line in this fall, so it's all done and seated down. Uh, like I said, we don't want our pipe, we thought we were kinda ready to go, and then we ran into a block with some controversy of, of, uh, are you guys bringing the six inch plane through the dry run and a hydrant right, uh, on the other side of the dry run? And then we'll take off from there, what's, what's the footage, what, what's plan? And we're, um, the only thing that brings it up is, um, there is a, there is a hydrant at Bruce Eppers on the other side of fifty-eight. You guys brought a hydrant to the partners, the new welding shop, within a, uh, reasonable distance. So, just across the dry run, uh, where the strip narrows, where it starts to triangle out. If, if that's the location, or is there none, uh, we would just love to know where we're gonna go, or what we're gonna do and get after it, so we can get in in, uh, October.
I thought we discussed at that, at that meeting, we were going through the dry run out, just where we could cap it and put up a hydrant.
That is wonderful.
I thought that was what we discussed.
Is it in the maintenance, is it not?
So, I, I can't speak on that, but I guess what I was gonna say is, is, is so, um, after our conversation we had Monday, I looked with you, Dan. Um, I did some digging, I talked to Reese, I talked to, um, Derek Quackling, the fire chief, and then else, I talked to Jason tonight. About all this, and so, after, I saw this map, got this map, and see that you guys had purchased up to eleventh, um, you know, I, I don't see, in any city you typically bring it in past the right of way and into, or into the right of way, and at the edge of the right of way, you would drop a curb stop, and from there, it's up to the owner of the property to pull it further past. Um, I think for a city to pay for a water main or a water line into private, uh, a privately owned parcel, um, sets a precedent that we just dealt with, what, a month ago? Was that not a month ago that we, uh, we had a citizen in here wanting us to pay for a water line?
Yeah.
So, um, you know, when you talk about the water line, Bruce Oliver's there across fifty-eight, um, you know, sure, there's a hydrant on that side, but, um, and I could be wrong, maybe it's in his yard, but it could be in part of the right one. I can't speak on that, I don't know what took place when that happened, but, um, I think if we put a hydrant in through the dry run, or even up to the dry run on the east side, or put it on the west side of the dry run, it sets a precedence there that the city's gonna pay for a portion of some of the utility line to go in. Um, and we're just putting our foot right in their mouth, and we said we would a month ago. So, I guess, I guess that's where it runs to me. Um, I think we should put it a setback as in every other house on that block has, which I'm assuming the curb stop is right at or right around your right of line, uh, off of the street.
And the welding shop that you speak of, is that the, um, Fabtech?
Yeah.
Okay, so that is on a, a street, and Kyle explained that to Jason, if you wanna speak on that. That is the street that goes there, so that's why it was extended longer.
Right, it never was many. The street is there.
Right. And there won't be a street.
The hydrant where there.
There won't be a street. So, they worked with Fabtech to, to get that, because they had to work out an agreement with them.
Right.
The star on the picture, what does that indicate?
That's where the hydrant is.
Well, that's where it would be.
Oh, it's the star, sorry, that, that's just pointing out that.
Just for St. John.
Because I was sending it to the.
A rough idea where church would sit, right?
Oh, I see.
Yeah, because he was requesting this, so he was not from here. Uh, sorry, I thought you meant this, and this is approximately hydrant, is that correct, Reese?
Right, that's what I figured out.
I see.
So, and as far as what our mayor said, I can't speak on that, I wasn't in, I wasn't in the meeting, um, was there anything, a written agreement?
There was no written agreement, uh, him and Dick at the time, obviously neither one of them are here, they just openly stated that, that, uh, uh, small city protocol is to come within two hundred fifty feet of the, the farthest distance, or the closest distance of two hundred fifty feet to any structure, and then they gotta take it from there. I didn't know any of the rules, we never, none of us knew anything past that, that was all hearsay. We would have had all the water line in by now, we, and we would have started right at the curb, if we wouldn't have had, you know, Terry asked you, Reese to draw out the front of the street, we were just gonna come from here, we would have had it done.
And, and seeing that two hundred fifty feet is, it's kind of a, it's kind of a known standard, you have roughly within three hundred feet on a residential area, or three hundred feet in a commercial area, five hundred in a residential, generally every block. Um, but, at that speaking, technically, it would be, your hydrant is right at the end of your property, it just happens to be the end of your property where there's not church.
Yep.
Um, you know, and that's where I talked to Derek, and I said, you know, the fire department has tanker trucks, you guys know how to run them, yep, yep, okay, you guys know how to run a drop tank, yep. Would you, if there was a fire at the church, would you run a tanker truck and drop tank, yep? I mean, so the, the fire protection is there, I mean, that, that's the only question of running hydrant out there, it's there. Um, and they have no issue of running a tanker truck and drop tank to, to fuel, or fight a fire, not fuel fire.
Is there, maybe you know, any kind of regulation of how close the city needs to provide a hydrant to, uh, uh, property, uh, that is in city limits?
Well, act, acting mayor before Reese speaks up, so, I mean, I've, I've heard about this issue a little bit in advance and thought a little bit about it. Um, I mean, the, one of the points is already been made by the council member.
Yeah.
If the city's gonna bring in main, that is a serve, a, a line that's gonna serve more than just one property, or is gonna be available for future development, city obviously has to have right of way for that line, and you can't just pull that in across the church's property. Um, and I guess the policy of the city, as I understand it, because I've heard about the, the Main Street project, and I've seen now George present on prior bond issues that you've done that have been special assessment projects, it's, it looks to me like the practice here, the policy here has been that when you extend mains, sewer or water mains, you especially assess that cost. Uh, so, I think for both those reasons, I don't, I don't know how, um, that would work here. Apart from that, you're asking a legal question about what your, what the laws are about this. Your code, of course, you've got a code section in chapter five of your code that deals with sewer and water mains that just says, to the extent a service, in other words, a connection from an existing main to a, a building or a property is gonna be put in, that's at the owner's expense, so, that's what your code says. Can, can you modify that? Could you vary that somehow? What I've said to Jill is, I suppose by agreement, which would be, I guess, a variance in the form of an agreement, you could modify your code requirement, I don't know why you would do that, candidly, but, uh, but yeah, your code says that, um, this connection would be at the owner's expense. You've actually got a permit requirement, I don't know if you've applied that, if Public Works applies that, but built, building owners, property owners that connect to your sewer and water need to pull a permit and make a connection, and then it's at their expense. So, I always get to be the bearer of bad news, but that's what your code says, and that's what the codes in the vast majority of cities in the states say.
So, anything south of the collection pond, we have a, we have a hydrant to service, is that already up there?
At the end of the street, yeah.
There is.
Yep.
Because I thought that's what we were talking about, so the only one that we talked about, what we discussed would be if we went into the Frederickson lots out there, that was what?
That's, that's, I'm gonna be honest, that was, we would have had this done hooked up at the end of the street, and Terry says, no, we wanna bring through the dry run for future expansion, and, and, uh, if there's something available, we'll take it, but if there isn't.
Yeah, I mean, that, that's part of what the thinking was, if, if the city would ever purchase that Frederick property on the north side, the, the big thing with the water system is you wanna loop it. And so, you'd bring your hydrant up there and you would then go north with it into the Frederick property.
Are you talking about this property over here?
Yeah, yeah.
So then.
Frederickson, I'm sorry.
No, that's fine, um, but just as a reminder from, uh, from recent council, is they're wanting to develop this way, right here first, so, there's no future going to, out, out there, so that's just a reminder, if that's what has been said, obviously you're welcome to go and change that, and you need to play this all in consideration for that crystal ball of what you're, what you're gonna do, and what the, what the future council is going to do.
The, the main thing was, is that, that's what was stated by the city attorney and the mayor, that they were gonna run it out there. That's what.
Just through the dry run to the, to the dry run. So, it can't stop our, our, we would have had all this done, and they're like, oh, they're gonna bring us, and I'm like, oh, okay, I didn't.
Yeah, act, acting mayor, I mean, obviously I can't speak for the prior city attorney and, and the mayor who's not here, and I feel for, for you if that all went down that way, I mean, I, obviously, I, I understand your concern. I mean, and now I'm stepping on Reese's toes and he can step in, but I mean, I think typically if, I mean, maybe it makes sense, maybe what you're saying makes sense, that looping a water for future expansion in the city to the north should be accommodated, uh, but I think that would be a project, right? I mean, that would be something an engineer would design, and we would have a right of way, and we would figure out the financing, and I mean, there's more to it than just saying we're gonna go across the dry creek, I mean, you gotta actually plan that. So, to the point, or made earlier about planning things, that requires some engineering and some planning and some financing, and uh, as we sit here now, I understand none of that's done, so, I think there's a way to make a connection, it sounds like, I don't, Reese, or Public Works, I'm sorry, I forgot your name now, Jason, sorry, but, uh, I mean, maybe that can be done, maybe there's no reason that the hydrant isn't available and the connection can be made, but to actually bring in a public line, a public main across there, I think a fair amount of additional work would have to be done to make that make sense.
It would be considered a lot more money, if you have to ask.
So, if we did want to run a little, you know, across the, 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 the dry run there, uh, could we deal with a variance?
Uh, we're, I mean, it would be for your guys' protection, but we have no, this river, I'm sure that would be totally fine, because we have no reason for this. This little strip of land where it narrows down and turns into a rectangle, a, a rectangle is only to get to access the sewer line.
And you would be, if we did propose a variance, and I'm not saying we're gonna do this tonight necessarily, but it's just a thought.
They really wanna move forward on this.
Yeah.
Acting mayor, I, I can short circuit you, because I, I raised the word variance, so let me, let me be clear. Your, your code currently says to make a connection from the public right of way to, from the public main onto a property, the connection is entirely at the, at the property owner's expense. So, the variance I was talking about would be varying that, allowing a connection to occur, not entirely at the landowner's expense. That is, the, the city paying for a portion of that. That would be just to make a, a private connection at taxpayer expense in part. Do I, have I analyzed whether that would be legal granting that kind of variance? No, I don't know, but that would be the only thing you could do to accommodate that. If you actually wanted to bring a sewer main or a water main across and put in right of way for that, I mean, lots of things would have to happen, it wouldn't be a variance from here, that wouldn't be a sewer connection or a water connection anymore. That would be a main going across onto private property, you'd need right of way, you'd need engineering, you'd need plants, so, there, there is no way to do that by variance, you'd have to have a project.
It's still up in the air as to whether we'll ever own that Frederickson property anyway.
And it's up in the air, um, when we would ever develop, um, west of eleventh street. I mean, of course, our city's growing, but, speaking of, we're not, we're not Woodbury, we're not the metro, you know, we're not.
We still have nine lots to sell before there's gonna be the third edition Swanson Heights to be located.
Exactly. We're not, we're not, you know, it's not five years down the road, and sure, yeah, we, you know, five years down the road, no, it's twenty, maybe, I don't know.
Yeah.
Throw a number out there.
Yeah.
So, I think we have to, and we just talked about budget.
Right.
We were just talking about budget.
All they wanna do is move forward.
Exactly.
And, and it's, and, and a six inch main and a sewer line has to be ten feet apart, it's an extra dig and, and slope. We can go two feet apart if we're a private, private main and a private sewer, they're both two inches, because we're pumping it down there. It, it's, it's way, way less deep, we just wanna go ahead, there's something promised, and there is nothing, that's, that's wonderful, we'll move on. We just wanna know, hopefully tonight, get our guys down and, uh, and, uh, finish, finish the water and sewer for this, uh, season.
And Kerry and Dick worked so much on all of that, neither one of them are here, so I, you know, it's, it's totally great to me, to be honest.
Yeah, yeah.
So, I'll look to my nose to see if there's anything about it, I couldn't find anything.
No, you weren't here then.
And it sounds to me to.
It was two thousand fifteen and two thousand sixteen.
No, that's, that's when I was here, I was here and made the purchase agreement for this property for the church, and, uh.
I say go ahead and get going with your own project.
And the only thing they did do, what they said they were gonna do, is they gave us an access to a gun on the end of eleven, and a place to dump in, in front of the lift stations, you know, because that's what we need.
Yep.
And they did that, they actually put that into the plan, put the lift station at the bottom of the street, where it probably would've went anywhere, but it was known, noted.
And if you wanna move on, for us to, like I said, to try to move that close, it, it sounds like that would take quite a, quite a project. It's gonna slow you down quite a bit, so, your, your best option probably is to go ahead and, yeah, connect to.
Well, it was kind of the original plan until.
It was brought up that day?
Yeah.
By the way, and I, I was just like, I wasn't here, no, I, and neither was Michael. If he was brought up that they were gonna bring fire detective, because Andy called me, he had the locates done, it would have all been done a month ago. It would have all been done.
Do we need to put this in writing now, somehow?
They would, they asked, they asked to have it in writing, correct? So, I have asked, um, Bob to possess with that.
So, did we have to make up?
What would I put in writing? I'm not sure what I put in writing. You know, I don't know if we have to have a resolution on this, or, I think it's just.
I think you do. I think you may have to. Yeah, because one of our hooking up, we were gonna.
Yeah, acting mayor and council, I don't, I defer to, to Jason, um, Jason.
Yeah.
Um, uh, you know, your, what your code conveys, which many cities' codes talk about, you get a, you go and get a permit to make the connection. I don't know how closely you follow that, if you have to go and talk to Jason, if you get a permit pulled or not, but there should be some, I mean, you shouldn't just go out and dig up city streets and put connections onto city facilities, you've gotta have some communication with staff, but I think you just process that, and I guess, I don't know if Reese has thoughts about whether that's an appropriate place or not, and all that stuff. Yeah.
It's all in the building permit, we've been out there.
Okay, so is that, and so I don't even have a building permit, um, and I, so I don't know if you even have any plans, so that's one of the things that, when it came to me, I'm like, go ahead and move the dirt, but I don't even, I don't even know what the, the plan drawings are, so.
I spoke with Doug Moore, the Goody County Inspector here, he said, there was no need for a building permit to do the dirt work in the Harvey lot, but then the next step was with the building itself, then we needed to go in and
Sure.
present the plans and get everything, but what we did so far.
Yeah, and I know Doug has mentioned that he's talked to you guys on that, so, um, and I have contact with Doug and I know Rich, so, if, if you want, if the council wants me to verify that, I certainly can, um. Um, but either way, they can move forward, so do you want something in writing, or is this?
Yes, yeah, yes. Yeah, we're, we're not in writing, just a lot of this work you're gonna get.
Okay, so I, I will work with, um, I'll work with the city attorney to get something in writing, and I'll pin it off to you.
That'd be great.
Okay.
Thanks, Dan.
I'm making some confusion.
You know, when things don't get put down in writing, that's what happens, it's gonna been wrote up, when it was first pulled from all of it.
I'm really knowing where you're in.
Right, I was sixteen.
Are there any other public concerns? Can we, can we move on, or?
Do we look up to that hydrant, right on the?
No, so, what, what is, what is, is I mean, do, does hydrant gotta be, do we gotta do it last half, or what, I mean, you gotta know what to.
Well, we can shut the main down, at the key decision, 10th and 11th.
Okay, so I think the council can continue to move on, I think these guys have their side conversations.
Okay, okay, we're gonna move on, and you guys, yeah, talk about what needs to be done from that point, okay? Any other public concerns? Nothing?
No, there's one, but.
And then, uh, so then we need a motion to pay the bills?
Hey, thanks, guys.
Good to have you all here.
Yeah, I went through them a little bit, I was like.
Yeah.
There's lots of pages here.
Lots of pages.
So, one I did have, trial court and the court finding.
Yep, so that's the only time that Dick has prosecuted anybody, um, so when, there must've been a citation that had to go re-prosecuted. So, then they have to pay their, that person has to pay their fees to the county and to Dick, and then, then it goes through the courts, and then they pay our, pay the city's fair share.
Okay, got you, got you.
It's a once a month, if, it's, it's a total loan sum.
Okay, so it is a once a month payment, if?
Yeah, so whatever they get fined, and it's not, I don't even have like a tracking record, I can't predict what's gonna be next month, that, like, like parking tickets and stuff like that, I see that, that paperwork, but this is like a serious, a serious charge, that's prosecution.
Okay.
And then what about like the donations, Kerry was telling me about a donation that the, the Lions does every year to kind of help the beating we take for the pool, you know, the, where, where, where is that?
We already got that, didn't we?
The beating that they take?
Well, not, well, the, the, the city loses money every year on the pool, and he said that, that, the donations from these other organizations actually helps with that, because, you know, the pool loses money every year.
Correct, so, so each month, when a donation has come in, you've seen it on the receipt, so there has.
First, yep.
But, it were, but, so there's none for this month, but if you looked back at prior months, there, there's some, when there's been a funeral, there's been some, uh, donation from the family.
Sure.
Um, there's been some of those, um, so, again, and then to answer the rest of your question, the, this, the pool is always negative, because it's a, um, what's the wording? Um, a necessity, uh, thing for the city.
Yeah, public necessity, yeah.
So then we actually do a, a fund transfer at the end of the year to clean up some of these that are, um, that are looking the negative, and the pool fund is always one of those.
Okay.
And then a D.
Yeah, there you go, that's.
So, this, uh, just a clarification, page one, well, please want, uh, uh, two claims for approval. Librarians grant living to reimburse their.
Yeah, that was a hundred.
Yeah, so that's a hundred and five thousand dollars, so they did, um, what was it, oh, Jason left me. Um, so when they did the assisted living project, there was an agreement to send this, uh, sewer down.
That's true.
Versus going.
Yeah.
So?
It changed, there were, they, and that's, that's where they patched, um, broadly and everything, right? That was all because of that for their water and sewer.
Yeah, so they made an, they made an agreement with them, and so they, they covered it in their loan debt bond, whatever they did, and then this is our agreement, now, that, now that they're open, um, we have.
Okay, that's.
Okay, so now, on that same sheet, so we have the claims list for approval, that lists people with. Yeah, but like, some of these names are council, current council people, is this?
Um, that's just a, that's just a sign off thing.
Okay, so we can ignore that?
Yeah.
Okay, I was so confused by some of the names.
If you wanted to get real technical on it, you were supposed to sign off every single page, is how the CTS, the accounting program is, but the city has, has a ordinance saying that you make one group, um, after a conversation.
Thank you.
And I don't know how to edit that out of there, so I just don't.
That was one thing that was.
Generally speaking, it never prints.
That was one thing that was confusing me, and I was like, what?
But if you wanted, look at the person's name that's listed right below that one, it's because I had did it on day number two, Jill Buxengard wanted to be reimbursed for her driving mileage to training last week, so that's why you got to see that special one more piece of paper.
That joke.
And then the, the swimming pool payroll, that'll be done, now this was the last one, I'll leave it, cause, okay.
Um, we did have a few little things that, again, if we do, that I would like it, um, we, we don't need a committee for everything, we don't need to have a committee to have a committee. But I think that I would like to throw out there, and I, I'm just briefly touching on it tonight, in January, when we do the appointments and the committee stuff, I think it's gonna be very important to have a committee, or at least one council member to be able to work with, um, Jason and I, and Todd, um, but Jason and I, as, as he's the director, to be somebody that, um, and I can go and check on the pool, but there's some things that come in, and sometimes, and I don't mind going and telling them, and talking to them, some of the complaints, some of the situations, but if you're gonna have a committee, um, you know, that would mean, if there's like, not really an infraction, but, uh, there's some lifers that just maybe not weren't made, uh, doing their full duties to, to their, um, what they're certi- certified to be doing. There's times that Jason has, and Todd has seen, that there's, um, supplies left out, well, those types of things, like, who do you wanna designate to handle some of those things? I, I guess the city clerk can do it, but at the same time, um, that's just one of those things, so when, when we were talking about the pool, um, I, I guess there was, uh, two pretty tough conversations that I had to have, um, this, um, swim season. I don't think they'll be happening again.
And this has nothing to do with the, bring things that go on in the city that the people are jumping over the fence and.
Nope.
Swinging at midnight, or, or getting blacked.
Nothing to do with that.
That's a voice, or a rights.
I think it was two o'clock, I heard it, like, here.
I don't know if we talked about this, I, I see the Lions building granting a storage container.
Yeah, so they're gonna do some remodeling, and so that comes, that comes, since the city owns that building, and so they have their funds with us, so when, so, when, they're doing the remodeling, and so when they get their donations, or, when they, not their donations, they give us donations, not us, other people, uh, other things that I belong to is whatever, um, but when they, so they have gambling, um, at one of the taverns. Um, so, um, that money comes and sits in our pool, because we, um, own that building, so they're doing some remodeling, so they needed the storage container to hold some things in there as a, a mod, remodeling thing. So, it actually comes out of their fund, but it's still in the general fund type of thing, um.
So that'll show up later, paid back to the city?
Yes, yeah.
And if you're wondering, the storage container just dropped off from that lady.
So, do we have a motion to approve the bills?
I will be approved the bills.
One second.
We have a motion and a second to pay the bills, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion passes, need a motion to adjourn, I'll make a motion.
Yeah, I'll say.
We have a, we have a motion and a second to adjourn, all those in favor? Aye, pose, we're done.
Nothing to it?
One of my longest yet.
Good job, yeah. Good job. Good job. There's a lot, there's a lot on there, meaty, meaty stuff, you know?
Yeah, 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 it was, so.
Yeah, it was very good, I totally agree.
Yeah. Good when you can depend on.
Got good results today.
And thank you.
Oh, not at all.
Thank you.
No, 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 good.
Appreciate it. Yeah.
Really early down in Crystal Lake, Iowa.
Did you really have to drive?
Many hours.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, well, like, our, the guy that was hauling our, uh, grain drivers, our, their last weight, so then they started sending me down there, yeah, that's, that's, uh.
Stuff, stuff.
You know, that time, man, they hounded me and all.
What time do you leave in the morning then?
Well, no, no, I had to go yesterday.
Oh, okay, okay. Yeah, wow.
Nice to see you.
Yeah.
Good to meet you in person, yeah, thanks a lot, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, too, Ray.
Thank you. We'll be in touch.
Everything's on track.
Okay.
Yeah. Smooth.